Okay. Good evening, we're going to start this meeting of the Lacey Township Board of Education. It's seven oh six on February seventeenth. Good evening, so can we please um stand and salute the flag?
Stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January twentieth uh twenty twenty-two and by posting the notice in the Fork River Post Office and the Long Island Harbor Post Office and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township clerk as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. Mister De George roll call please.
Recall for attendance Mister Ormatto.
Here, thank you.
Mrs Claus.
Here.
Mister Peters. Mrs McAvoy.
Yes, I'm here.
Mrs Downing.
I'm here.
Mister Scanlon. Do you see him Mister Plino?
No, uh so I just got off the phone Mister Scanlon, he's having technical difficulties, he's unable to get in. He said he's gonna keep trying um and try to get in as soon as possible.
Very good, thank you. Mister Plino.
And I am here, thank you.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. It's unfortunate that because of the actions of a handful, we have to do all this craziness and we're board members can't get in and everything else like that, but that's something I'm gonna deal with tomorrow. So with that being said, uh we are going to, this is the agenda meeting, so we are going to open up the agenda for um public comments and Mister De George, you have something you wanna read?
Sure, an audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand virtually and when called upon state their name, address or affiliation and intention to make a statement. Comments shall be, as Mister Plino said, limited to agenda items only. Comments should be addressed to the board president. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes and no audience member will be recognized twice until all who wish to comment have been recognized.
Mister De George, could I have a minute? I just wanted to let everyone know that I finally figured out my problem and I'm on.
Thank you, sir, welcome.
Thank you Ed, glad to have you here. Okay, so we're gonna open up to public comment, so um Mister Lytle, this is gonna be in your hands at this point, so you let them know what you gotta do.
Thank you Mister Plino, so anybody who would like to make a public comment on agenda items only at this time, please raise your hand using the Zoom app or dial star nine if you're calling in via telephone. You'll be called to unmute your microphone and speak in turn on agenda items only. At this time, I see none Mister Plino.
Okay, so we have none, we're going to uh do committee reports. So um with that, we are going to start um, when we start with Miss Claus, excuse me, Mrs Claus. With policy, are you ready to go?
I'm ready to go.
Go for it, thank you.
Okay, um so I'm doing policy tonight. Uh we called to order at four thirty, Mrs Downing, Mister Peters, Doctor Clark, Mister De George and myself were present. We opened up our meeting with a discussion regarding our already established curriculum policy twenty-two hundred. Bill Nacastro and Pete Salerno of Strauss S M A assisted in the discussion uh via phone to the committee about the rationale and legislation um about the basis of revision. Uh that policy is on for uh approval tonight. We also discussed policy zero one six seven, public participation in board meetings. Doctor Clark led the discussion and provided an overview of the proposed changes and informed the committee that no changes will be made until um as the resolution was approved in January's board meeting, which outlines public par- participation during um the pandemic. Uh we also discussed implementing notification when there is one minute remaining um in public comment and also providing a large uh countdown clock. We discussed regulation six four seven one, school district travel. Mister De George led that discussion about the revisions. He also shared with us um an administration travel wool packet that goes into effect in March. One of the main points that were discussed is the process on how the staff um gets their travel approved and reimbursed. Uh he's streamlining that process via online versus paper and also the receipts will be directly sent to the VA office for approval uh versus the assistant superintendent. Uh this is on the agenda tonight as well. The last policy we spoke about um was policy zero one seven one, uh duties of the president and the vice president. The policy committee has been working on this policy since June. Um the goal was not only to improve the policy, but align it with New Jersey School Board Association. Uh we spent some time comparing um the new additions that we had um with another district's policy uh just to see if we were kinda on the same um, you know, on the same line, which we were. Um as requested uh by Mister Armando last month, um Skip brought up um to discuss um you know, uh the who can delegate uh to the committees, um so we discussed that. Um it was agreed that it is the sole role and responsibility of the board president to decide who would be on each committee and serve as an alternate. And this um also aligns with the NJ SBA. Um we had no co-curricular or LTAS A items to discuss um. Let's see, Mister De George um gave us a brief uh overview on Alyssa's Law and he updated us on uh regarding the solution to comply with Alyssa's Law and will be voting on that company tonight in Forma Cast um who will be providing the services for us um, which is a five-year contract fully funded by grant money. Other than that, we just briefly talked about the district calendars and I believe everybody had that on their agenda for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and also uh twenty-two, twenty-three. And that's pretty much all we have, so nothing new, um we just had discussions on existing policies and regulations.
Thank you, Mrs Claus and the Policy Committee for your diligent work. Do we have any discussion for the Policy Committee with that or on the agenda items for the policy?
Yeah, I I do, um I was on the policy with the president, vice president, the last item listed there. I don't think we're us saying that we were gonna keep that. I thought we were getting rid of that because we felt it wasn't part a policy, it was more of a uh how would you word it? Someone's personality or ability to do, not a policy. I thought we were gonna get rid of that.
Code of ethics, Mrs Downing, could it, could that be more of a code of ethics?
Yeah, it it would.
Model a high standard of ethical conduct.
Yeah, that would be more of an ethics thing more than I believe a policy. Uh we talked about that, so I thought that was going to be off.
Let me check, uh Vanessa, do you recall because um I'll look at the notes.
I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay, I I thought we did end up with fourteen though, Linda, but let me look.
Uh I believe it was thirteen.
Thirteen, then that one should come off.
Okay, good, because I wasn't ready to, I wasn't ready to accept that tonight with that, that's still staying on there.
So can we take that off and still vote on this tonight? Or does it have to be um well, red red dye?
We can, we can table it or we can make the correction and put it on with the correction, it's entirely up to you.
Yeah, if there's unanimous consent to make the correction, that's fine. If if there's some discussion or concern over the correction, then you could have a motion to amend the policy now and and you guys could debate it now or refer it back to table and refer it back to committee.
I'm good with taking it off tonight and um putting this through for first read if everybody else is. Yeah, I taking number fourteen off.
Excuse me, one second please, if I may, I'm sorry, I didn't throw, I got booted out, so I, Mrs Downing started to say something about the last item and I lost from there. So what was the last item, Mrs Downing?
The last item talked of, can you read what it said, Kim?
Yes, it says model a high standard of ethical contact, conduct and confidentiality. So we did talk about um uh what it, what it, what did you say, Linda, how um?
I didn't, we didn't feel it was a pop, that was actually a policy, it was more of an ethical issue. How one behaves when they're a president or, you know, or the actions, it wasn't really um their role. Where where that's, this policy was the role of the president, that just didn't seem to be right to be in there.
And a lot of, we took out a lot too that had to do with all board members, so this would just be pertaining to the duties of the president and vice.
Vice President.
So you asked, Mrs, Mrs Downing, are you asking to remove that last item?
Yeah.
From this, alright, so I caught the tail on the Mister Padula's um statement, so so we could amend it here and continue as a first read, yes, did I hear that?
Or um I I have a suggestion, could we just table it because we didn't get a chance to talk about it in committees? Only because policy was after finance and curriculum. So we didn't get a chance to talk about it in other. And Doctor Clark, don't usually if there's a new policy, we talk about it in other, in the other committees.
Uh not, we do.
This isn't a new policy, Donna, this is.
No, I know, oh, it's been going on, but we didn't see it, I'm saying we, we didn't see it um until after the committee meetings and normally we're able to see it, discuss it in other, it's a new one. It's a new one because it's um revised.
Okay, so so does, does the Policy Committee Chair want to withhold it um so the other committees can see it? Because it was after the fact and then do it again next month?
It, okay, it was sent to everybody um in the attachments um prior to the meeting, so it's up to you guys what you wanna do, I mean, I, I'm comfortable taking it off, but if Donna's not comfortable, I'm fine with tabling it for one more month, so.
Okay, so why don't we table that that one, just when we move, thank you, that greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
So we're gonna table it.
So just to be clear, um then we're only tabling policy um zero one seven one. Correct.
Right, so I think Doctor Clark, as uh Mister Padula said, when we get to that, we will um submit it as revised uh by remanding the uh that policy back to committee. I think that's the way we'll do it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I should have brought it up sooner, I just kinda.
No, that's fine, if if you had issue, I'm glad you brought it up now.
Yeah, that's a good catch, Linda, I thought we took everything off that we needed to take off.
No, that's fine, it's, that's, that's okay, that's what, that's what this is questions for, so that's all good. Okay, so that we're done, uh Miss Claus, everybody, any more questions for the Policy Committee?
And just so you know, we did all agree to take that off in committee, so um it was just an error that it's, it's still on here.
Alright, uh no problem, so um we're gonna move on. Um next committee, uh why don't we have uh Mrs Downing, you okay to go?
Yes, I have a lot. You're ready?
Uh we're ready, I believe and I know I was there.
Okay, so the curriculum um committee met on February ninth. In attendance was Mrs McAvoy, Mister Plino, Doctor Clark, Mister Zalinski and we had guest speakers, Mrs Amos, District Supervisor, Mister Bond, Director of Special Services and Mister's um Mister Brandis was there um also uh for doing a presentation. So uh first of all, good news, um the um Milpon, the Proud Paws uh were awarded the Oceans of Love Public Service Award. They earned this as a public um it will, they will be recognized, I'm sorry, March twenty-fifth at a gala in New Egypt. And if you're interested in going, how much are the tickets, Doctor Clark?
A hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so if you're interested and would like to go, tickets are a hundred and fifty dollars um to attend. Uh so congratulations to Milpon Proud Paws, one of my favorite organizations, they do so much, so this is well deserved, congratulations. Uh Mister Brandis provided an overview of a proposal for a business academy program to include the possible pathways to an associate degree as well as pathways to a Bloomberg certification at the completion of the course progressions. This program will begin with the class of two thousand twenty-four and um well, I'll come back to that. Mister Zalinski provided an overview of the high school and the middle school master schedule, which will return to an A B master schedule and it will replace the block schedule. And uh one of the main reasons is that our, when the stu- our students are taking AP exam, if they're, if they have the course in the fall and then they take the exam in the spring, material is lost and we don't feel they do as well, so um instead of just doing the AP, we're going to go full bloom with everybody doing the A B schedule.
Mrs, Mrs Downing, excuse me, I, so um it's not replacing the block schedules, replacing the semester schedule? Is that correct?
That's correct, it's gonna be an A B block schedule instead of a semester block schedule.
Okay, we're still doing block, but we're gonna do an A B and we're just going non-semester like, okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Good question. Uh Mister Zalinski is working with the high school administration informing a National Arts Honor Society to help better recognize outstanding fine art students. He also led a discussion of possible renovations to the high school STEM room. He'll be working with the high school administration and teaching as, the teaching staff as well with the architect to plan for this project in the summer of two thousand twenty-two. Mrs Amos led a robust, robust discussion recommending the purchase of a Scholastic magazine for grades K through five and the purchase of Scope magazine for grades six through eight. These materials are used for many things to include small group instruction as well as guided reading, assignments to name a few, and our teachers actually asked for this through Mrs Amos. Um so we looked at it and we um approved it. Parent University, um there are some topics and dates coming up, February twenty-second in the Lacey Township Lecture Hall, Education Lingo, it's gonna be led by Cedar Creek Elementary School. And on March twenty-second is the Abilities Fair led by the Office of Special Services. And there'll be two more to be determined in April and May. So we hope all you parents can attend these, they're gonna be really good. Mister Zalinski led a discussion where the high school will pay for the students to to participate in advanced placement exams for the school year two thousand twenty-two. This recommendation was based on results from last year, which were heavily, heavily affected by COVID protocols and the goal of returning the high school to full participation in these exams. He also led a discussion of the high school proposal to participate in the college level examination program known as CLEP, C L E P. Uh CLEP offers thirty-four exams that cover introductory level college course material. With a passing score on the one CLEP exam, you could earn three or more college credits at two thousand nine hundred US colleges and universities. We talked about of our state field trip, we're approving our track team to go to the Penn Relays in April. Or it's on the agenda to approve. Mister Zalinski also proposed another course proposal for the high school called A P Macroeconomics. Six period, uh miss, he led also, we, we let, we had a lot of new stuff, Mister Zalinski, thank you for all your efforts here. Uh he left, led a brief high school uh discussion about the high school guidance, he updated us. Um he's having a, he had a roundtable with the high school guidance counselors and developed an action plan. Mister Zalinski informed the committee that the high school received the A P Computer Science Female Diversity Award. This was awarded for our female participation in advanced placement computer science classes. These classes are led by teacher Karen Hobson. He also informed the committee that we will be assisting with student nurse observations through Felician University. Of course, we have to approve that um on the agenda. Mister Bond provided an update of the Milpon Master Teacher and the new preschool teacher replacement hire for the Master Teacher. Uh she is planning social activities for parents and the community members. She's an additional support for the paraprofessionals in managing behaviors. And they've been developing goals for the paraprofessionals, so they have a clear vision of what they are responsible to do. He led a discussion of the CPAG Committee and other special education highlights. There'll be an Abilities Fair taking place on March twenty-second. Um that will be in conjunction with a Unified Club Game Night at Lacey Township High School. And the main idea is to allow special education students to interact with general education peers within the school buildings and in the community as a whole. The sale program, teachers Leonard Smilewitz and Bannon have renamed the courses. Supporting All in Lacey supports the Life Skills Room and a Community-Based Instruction and Work-Based Learning. Uh we already talked, Kim mentioned the Alyssa's Law. Uh the Community Relations, Miss uh Doctor Clark and Mister Zalinski have been uh doing Listen and Learn. I believe you've already done Seabreeze, correct? Um she's.
Not yet, not yet, we're getting to Seabreeze, yes, we've met with uh students and our PTA presidents are next. Um followed by our, our parents, which I'll be talking about in my comments.
Very good. Um Health AIDS will be starting at the health, in the health offices and kindergarten paraprofessionals are being hired to assist in the kindergarten classrooms. Okay, um and we already talked in policy about the district calendar, the proposed district calendar and that's it in a nutshell, thank you Mister Plino. Any questions?
Uh my only question, uh Mrs Downing, I was at your meeting. Um for the next committee meeting, could you please um revisit Scholastic, I'd like to talk about that more, so if you could add that to the curriculum agenda for next month, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I know Mrs McAvoy was not in favor Scholastic, um so.
I'd just like to have a little couple more talks about it and just, you know, hash it out a little bit more.
Will that hold us up from getting it for our teachers, Mister Zalinski or Doctor Clark?
It's already in the budget for next year, she can hold up the year.
Alright. What did you say Mister Zalinski, I didn't hear that.
That it's replaced in the budget, but of course it's up to you guys with discussion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple questions, if you're done, Donna.
Yes, sure.
Okay, well, actually, why don't you like that program, I, I really don't know much about it. Um the Scholastics, or?
Oh, it's not that I don't, it's not that I don't like it, I just wanna make sure it's um fixed in the curriculum, that's all.
Oh, okay. Okay, um so when you refer to the block, we're doing like Cardinal Navy again?
Correct.
Yes, it'll be Cardinal Navy again.
Okay, and that's from like September to the end of the year, like all class is gonna go all the way from beginning to end now?
Next year, correct.
Next year, yeah, okay.
We're returning to the A B block, we largely went to semester block to cohort our kids better uh during the heavy times and it just doesn't work for us at this time. Doesn't mean we ever go back to semester block, but for next year, we're gonna do A B block.
Um okay.
Because of lots of advantages, A P being one of them.
Yeah, okay, and actually while I have you, um for the advanced placements exam, so currently we um how many students you think take that, like why are we, why was the discussion to pay for them to take the exam? Uh uh pay for that next year?
We're trying to give kids this year every advantage and every encouragement to take those exams. We really hit a low point last year and a lot of things hit a low point, A P was one of them. Um and A P becomes a lot of tradition, A P becomes a lot of, hey, I've, we're all taking the A P exam and one of the encouragement ideas that we had was that we would fund it this year to make sure that, uh we have a lot of kids in A P, not everybody takes the A P exam for a lot of the reasons. Some of the re- that they already pay for college credit, they pay for other things while they're in those A P courses. But we also encourage the kids to take those A P exams because it's a very good measure of how we're doing um uh with the College Board and with those advanced classes. So the idea was floated and the Curriculum Committee, I believe, agreed that this would be a year that we should fund it fully and then see where we land at the end of uh of August when we get the results back.
Okay, so then it would just be for one year that we pay?
Currently, one year.
For now, okay.
Of course, recommended for another year.
Okay, and then, so now currently, if we get a three-year better, then we reimburse, is that what we're doing?
That is correct, so in this paradigm, we don't worry about the reimbursement, so we pay for every.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't wanna go backwards, I know that was a big to-do a couple years ago to take it off the table, but if it's for one year because of COVID, I, I mean, I'm for that, you know, someone needs the extra help to get the program going and financially, but I don't know if it's something that we should be paying for every year, but it's just my thoughts.
Any more questions, Miss Claus?
No, that'll do it.
Anybody else have questions for the Paul, uh the, uh yeah, okay, Curriculum Committee? Once, twice, great, thank you, Mrs Downing and Mister. Um we are going to Finance Committee and Chair, Mrs McAvoy.
Thank you, we met on February seventh, myself, Mister Plino, Mister Scanlon, Doctor Clark and Mister De George were in attendance. We were able to meet our new facilities manager, Mister John Smith and he spoke to us and welcomed us and told us about his role. And he's only been there for two months, but he just wanted to tell us and give us a feel for who he was. So it was very nice to meet him and we're very excited about um what he's going to do as an educational facilities manager. He's already been taking many classes to get um different degrees to help him in his role. We talked about the need to replace some equipment in the grounds department and Mister De George will give us more specifics at the next, next meeting about the equipment that will need to be replaced. Uh Mister De George presented an agreement between us and the township, which would provide um to pay for a crossing guard, one per year for the next school year, I, for the next five years. And we will have a resolution about that presented tonight. We talked about the um proposed settlement agreement between the Board of Ed and Atlantic Coast Alarm related to the fire alarm replacement project and that resolution will also be tonight. We received information regarding Colonial Life Insurance Company's long-term disability product and recommended adding Colonial Life to the other contractors who currently provide this life insurance to their district staff members. All of this is at no cost to the district. We talked about the Esser Grant and tonight Mister De George will be making a presentation very comprehensive about where the money, um Esser monies went to. Mister De George um recommended insurance of formal quotations for the HVAC repair and maintenance and lawn maintenance services for a twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Um we talked about safe staff travel procedures, but that was brought up in the other committee reports. Uh Mister De George talked about the annual budget and to remind the public, we will be having a community budget workshop on April sixth. And also the Finance Committee will be meeting again next week to start talking more about the budget and then we will also turnkey to the other committees. We talked about the Business Administrator Posting, as we know Mister De George is retiring July first. And we just put out a second posting, we have a few candidates that will be interviewed and we also put it out again to try to get more candidates interested. And interviews will start in March for that position. We talked about Alyssa's Law, but that was also brought up in the other committee reports. We talked about the CDL Driver Training and we are updated regarding the CDL Training for District Bus Drivers. We talked about late buses and Mister De George provided an update of how many students are using the late buses. Um not as many as we hoped for right now, but it's new, so we're hoping more students will utilize our late buses. And then we talked about the same things that the other committees did, that district calendar. We talked about the mask mandate and the governor's executive orders, which we all know come March seventh. We will have options, each person will have the option if they want to wear masks or not. And that's about all, it was a lengthy meeting, very comprehensive, Mister De George, thank you. I know you put a lot into all the meetings, so thank you for all you do. Is there any questions from anyone?
If I may ask one, just clarification, I'm not sure if I heard you correctly. Did you say that there was track repair being done at the high school or did I just mishear that?
I think you misheard that, I didn't say track.
Okay, oh.
I'm not sure which, I'm not.
I think.
I'm not sure Mister Armando, what um?
I, when you were talking about um um the grounds crew and.
Oh, okay, I think I know what you mean, okay, Mister De George. Oh, okay, I think I know what you mean. Okay, Mr. De George spoke to us about the need to replace equipment. Equipment. And then, um, next month, he'll give us the specifics of what equipment needs to be replaced. Anyone else? Okay, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy and Finance Committee. At this point, I'm going to ask for, uh, uh, superintendent comments. So, Dr. Clark, you wanna go now?
Uh, I don't have any comments for right now. I will save them for, uh, the second part of our meeting.
Thank you. So, um, at this point, we're also gonna offer the time for board members to, um, ask any questions. So I'm going to start with, um, Mr. Amato. Do you have any, uh, not questions, but comments, I'm sorry.
No, as of right now, everything's great. Good job, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Amato. So, uh, Mrs. Claus, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peters is not here, um. Mrs. Downing, do you have anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, um. Mrs. McAvoy?
No, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. President, Mr. Scanlon.
I just have a brief statement I'd like to make, uh, just so that we get ahead, uh, that I'm able to say this before public comment. Uh, I just would like to address the misinformation being spread by members of the LTEA. For the record, we have been negotiating. The LTEA is the organization that, uh, made the decision to go to arbitration at our last session. Every session that we've had, we've ended it with a, um, attempt to come up with two uh, future negotiating sessions. And the difficulty for finding sessions is shared equally by the LTEA and the board. We would go around and people would check their calendars and, uh, we would come up with, uh, agreeable dates. And if you're being told basically anything other than that, you're not being told the truth. Thank you.
Mister, I'm sorry, Mr. Pleno, I did have something.
Well, too late.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanna concur with Mr. Scanlon. I'm a part of the negotiations committee also. We've negotiated for an entire year. I think social media is out of control, saying that the Board of Education does not want to negotiate. The Board of, the Board of Education has, um, shut down negotiations. I was at every single negotiations meeting. Truth in fact, it was the LTEA who first said, let's go to impasse. So all the rumors that are out there, um, saying that we wanna add on time, that we wanna do this, that we wanna do that, all false. Um, I know we're under specific ground rules that we cannot talk about specifics. But it's so disheartening to open up Facebook and read what the Board of Education is doing. The Board of Education cares about our staff. We want a fair contract, and that's why we're at impasse. Two different sides could not agree. Two sides collectively decide to, decided to go to impasse. We respect our teachers. We want a fair contract for all teachers. Not a certain group here or there, but every teacher, every staff member. We are looking at fiscal responsibility and a fair contract to all. So the social media is out of control. Thank you, Mr. Pleno.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. The only thing that you said wrong, because now it's my turn, that we can openly talk because we are at an impasse at this point. So to add on to, because if, those that don't know, uh, this year, I am the, I am the Chair of the Negotiations Committee. And our last meeting, we presented our sticking point is a six-period stipend. And for those that don't know what the six-period stipend is, middle school and high school teachers, all of them get $4,500 a year to teach 22 extra minutes. Our elementary teachers do not get that. And where the impasse comes in, we want that fixed. We have no problem paying for time in front of the students. We just don't wanna be paying extra money for time not in front of the students. We're not extending the day. We're not asking for that. We're asking for fair work for fair wages. That is a sticking point. The LTEA does not wanna hear about it. So at that point, they fear that they were at an impasse. They wanted a percentage. I told them they're not getting a percentage for raises until we clear up the six-period stipend. It's not gonna work until we sit down and we really fix this six-period stipend. So whatever union officials are telling the membership, we didn't offer zero. We just said we're not offering anything until we fix a six-period stipend. But the representatives of the LTEA do not want to fix the six-period stipend. They wanna continue getting $4,500 more in both middle and high school to teach 22 to 25 extra minutes a day. I don't think it's fair to the taxpayer. That money costs us over $800,000 a year going to these teachers. We actually offered them to do a separate pay scale for those teachers to filter it out. The response was, we can't do that because it would make our union go against each other because of separate pay. So it is not the school board that's doing this. We are more than willing to sit down and we were. The exact words from the LTEA was, we feel we're at impasse, and that's where we landed. So, again, to concur with, with Mr. Scanlon and Mrs. McAvoy, we're not the ones that walked away from the table. They were. We did not offer zero. We didn't offer anything until the six-period stipend is taken care of. And I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers, and I don't think it's fair to people going on social media and bash us for things that aren't true. So you need to get your story straight, and maybe everybody in union needs to talk to their representatives to find out what's going on. Thank you. So at this point, we're gonna move on. So, uh, we're gonna ask for a private session, Mr. George. Um, yeah, Mrs., uh, do you have no comments, right, Dr. Clark? Did I miss you? No.
No, not right now. I'll make my comments.
Yes, okay, so, Mr. De George, please.
Sure. Be it resolved that a private session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation and bullying, and confidential personnel matters, including but not limited to collective bargaining. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of private session is estimated to be approximately of 45 minutes. It could be a little bit sooner than that, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business action, maybe taken. Motion, please.
I'll make a private session.
Second.
I'm sorry, who is the, who is the motion? I'm so sorry.
Uh, Ed.
Thank you. And Mrs. McAvoy. Thank you. We are in private session.
Thank you. We'll see you folks in about 40, 45 minutes. Good evening. Uh, we're going to, uh, continue our, uh, meeting now. I know it's late. Um, and I apologize for the length of our private session. We had to get some stuff done. Um, so before we venture off onto the agenda, we're going to, um, we're going to open up with our, um, SGA President Alexis Frazee for her comments. Alexis, are you there?
Yes, hi.
Hi there. Did I catch you off-guard?
No, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you.
So this month, SGA released the app Lions Pride to the entire school. And it puts the clubs, activities and sports schedules into one platform. And that provides incentives for students to participate in extracurricular activities. Points can be earned for attending events, which then can be turned into prizes. SGA is currently looking for donations for prizes, and any small business in Lacey that is interested in donating should contact Mrs. York in the high school. And this would be a great incentive for students to get involved and try to boost school spirit in the school. Currently, the junior class is preparing for the junior prom, which will be held in May. A date is yet to be finalized, but we're working on that currently. The senior class is also preparing for the senior prom in June, and the date is also waiting to be finalized. And our next SGA meeting is Monday, March 7th at 1:45 PM in the lecture hall. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Appreciate it. Have a good one. Okay, so, um, our plus president Mason Heck is not here, so I understand. So we'll look forward to seeing him maybe next month. So, report of the superintendent, Dr. Clark.
Yes, thank you, Board President Pleno. Can everybody hear me? Yes?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. Okay, uh, welcome to the, uh, February board meeting, and thank you, Alexis, for joining us tonight to, uh, report on behalf of your peers. We are so appreciative when our students, uh, join us, and we look forward to having, uh, Mason join us next month. Uh, we have, uh, two rather, uh, large presentations tonight. Our curriculum team, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Zelinski and our district supervisors, Mrs. Amos and Mr. Dowd, will present the district's Start Strong Assessment Overview. And Mr. George is going to do a presentation that outlines the ESSER funds uh, that the district received, uh, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Before we get to that, uh, as I always do, I, I want to recognize our student artists. Madeline King, who's a fourth grade student at Fork and River School, designed the cover of our board agenda. And Nicolette Buren, who's also a fourth grade student at Fork and River School, uh, did the artwork for the superintendent's report. So thank you, Madeline. Thank you, Nicolette. I hope you have an opportunity to come over and visit us at the board office so that you can see your artwork, uh, that is hanging here. As always, we are appreciative of our students and the time that they take to decorate our agenda and, uh, superintendent's report. Um, last month, uh, we had some conversation about, uh, a random drug testing report. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask that Mr. Zelinski provide the school community with a random drug testing report for the time period spanning from uh, August 1st, 2021 to January 31st, 2022. Uh, by way of a quick summary, we are in our seventh year of random drug testing, which is a program intended to have a positive effect on deterring drug use and providing a means for the early detection of students with drug problems. Uh, so by no way is the program intended to be punitive. In fact, it's the exact opposite. So we will be reporting, uh, tonight and then again at the end of the school year. So, Mr. Zelinski.
Yeah, and, and Dr. Clark, you said it the best, and, and that's always the reminder that we have to always give whenever we talk about random drug. Is that is a, it is a non-punitive program that will not follow a student because it's all about them getting help. Um, we've had the program since 2014. It's our seventh year of testing. Uh, for those who aren't really familiar with random drug testing, uh, New Jersey statutes allow for high schools to random drug test students who participate in extracurricular activities, who hold a parking pass, um, or who might participate in clubs, uh, at the high school level. Um, by extension, Lacey Township School District has a voluntary random drug testing policy, uh, for our middle school. Um, that pool shrinks and grows, uh, over time, but that is completely voluntary. Uh, and we also do it at the middle school as well, and we have, uh, many participants in there. Um, so it's a high school and it's a middle school program. Uh, and any student, whether they participate or not, are allowed to opt into the program, and we have several students whose parents and families opt them in, even if they don't participate in any activities. Um, for the period that you mentioned, which was, uh, uh, August to, uh, January of this year. Um, you know, we've had several people request these numbers. So I can only give you so much because I cannot do any revealing of how our students are doing, but what I can give you is the public information is that from that period of time, we performed 238 tests between the high school and the middle school. Uh, our, our testing, uh, group comes twice a month, um, and our positivity rate is 4.2%. Um, so it's 238 tests, and a positivity rate for a six-month period was 4.2%. Um, generally, you're looking at the entire year when you look at positivity rate, so that number can go up or go down. Uh, there are some national averages out there. It varies state by state, it varies region by region. Um, but, uh, we work with a company called Sports Safe, and Sports Safe says that 4.2% is rather good. Uh, when he looks at all the other different high schools that he works with. Um, it means that, in, in theory, it means that the program has, is having a positive impact. Because in places where they don't have programs like this, they commonly see positivity rates higher than 4.2%. So that's, that's the report.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Zelinski, as I mentioned, uh, we will be, uh, providing another report at the end of the school year. So thank you for that. All right, um, unfortunately, uh, we are unable to recognize our seniors of the month for October and January in person tonight. Uh, nor are we able to recognize in person the unsung heroes for, uh, November and February, though we had every intention. Uh, we are going to move those presentations to March, uh, because as you know by now, uh, we have announced that as per, uh, the governor's recent announcement, uh, effective March 7th, um, masks will be optional, and that communication can be found on our website. So I will be reaching out to, uh, those families tomorrow to invite them to the, uh, March board meeting so that they can be recognized in person. So on behalf of the Board of Education, Principal Brandis and the district, I apologize to our students and their families, uh, that we were unable to hold our meeting in person tonight and recognize you. Uh, in March, we will also recognize the February seniors of the month in person. But I am going to ask that Mr. Lytle play the video, uh, for them so that we can congratulate Susanna Mestella and Brayden Mottershed. So, uh, congratulations to both of you, Susanna and Brayden. We look forward to seeing you in March as well. Mr. Lytle, can you roll the video, please?
Good evening. We're here celebrating February's seniors of the month. I'd first like to congratulate Susanna Mestella for being February's Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Susanna. At this time, we're gonna watch a video of her accomplishments.
My name is Susanna Mestella, and I am proud to be February's Senior of the Month for Lacey Township High School.
Susanna, congratulations on earning Student of the Month for February 2022.
Susanna has been a four-year member of both my soccer team and our Lacey Women's Bowling Team. And not only is she, that she stand out as an athlete, she also stands out in the classroom and as a, uh, just a general great person, uh, as well.
Some of my favorite memories at Lacey Township High School are spending time with my teammates on my soccer and bowling team. And I also really like going to homecoming and participating in Battle of the Classes.
Z, I've had the pleasure of having you in US Two Honors last year and now AP US History this year. And I can't think of anyone who is a better candidate for one of our Senior of the Month award recipients than you. You've always been a hard worker. You've excelled in everything you've done, and you've always brought that smile and a little bit of history charm to our class, and I just wanna say congratulations and thank you.
Some of the sports and activities I do at Lacey Township High School are soccer, bowling. I also participate in Interact and SGA, and I am a member of the National Honor Society.
She's always, uh, always there to help anybody who's in need of help. And I could not be more proud of, uh, Susanna for achieving this award. It's well-deserved.
After high school, I plan to be in the three-plus-three physical therapy program at Simmons University in Boston.
Z, you always brought intelligent discussions to class. It's something I'll never forget. You always brought history to another level and enjoyed all the material we studied. I can't thank you for enough for that. It's been a great two years, and you deserve it.
We're back, celebrating the seniors of the month. I'd like to congratulate Brayden Mottershed. Congratulations, Brayden. At this time, I'll watch a video of his accomplishments as well.
I'm Brayden Mottershed, and I'm really proud to be Lacey Township's February Senior of the Month.
Brayden, congratulations on earning the other Student of the Month spot for February 2022. It's well-deserved.
Congratulations, Brayden Mottershed, and winning Senior of the Month.
I've had the pleasure of working with you not just this year in AP History, but also the last three years, and soon to be a fourth year for boys volleyball. You are a growing and excellent volleyball player. You are an all-star in the history classroom, even though you're STEM. And you always brought something intelligent and unique with you to the court or to class, and I can't thank you enough for that hard work. Congratulations.
At Lacey Township High School, I am involved in National Honor Society and volleyball.
I haven't gotten to see you very much this year during your senior year, but I'm looking forward to the volleyball season. Why? Because I really miss that sense of humor that you have. It reminds me of when, last year in STEM III, we were making the Egg Catcher Project, and you came in with a bag of sugar. The whole goal of the project was to save an egg from dropping it from the top of the football bleachers, and you said, don't worry, don't even worry about it. I got this. You'll see. The first egg you dropped, you didn't even make it anywhere near your apparatus. You said, well, I could work on my aim. After that, sharpshooter, saved the egg every single time. And you looked at me and said, what'd I tell you? It's that kind of overall hard work and creative thinking that has gotten you to this point. It's that kind of overall hard work and creative thinking that has gotten you to this point right now where I'm thanking you very much for all of the hard work and dedication to your educational success.
After high school, I'd like to spend my time at Rutgers New Brunswick, studying to be a biomedical engineer.
Brayden, I have to admit something to you. Until last year, I couldn't tell you or your brother apart, not even kidding. So, I'm glad I finally understand that you typically have longer hair than Colin, although you guys started changing that up on me last volleyball season in class. Either way, I've enjoyed every minute together, even if I didn't know which one of you it was.
So, congratulations once again, Brayden. I'm winning Senior of the Month.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for playing that, Mr. Lytle. And congratulations again to Susanna and Brayden. Great achievements. And again, we really, really look forward to seeing you at our March Board Meeting. All right, let's turn our attention to the amazing staff members who provide tremendous support and services for our students and staff, both in and out of the classroom. Again, it was our intention to recognize the October and January staff members of the month in person, but instead, we will do that also in March. We have already played those videos, but very quickly, congratulations again to Karen Knapp, a paraprofessional at Mill Pond and Maria Orico, who's a, works in the cafeteria at the high school. They were October Staff Members of the Month. And January, congratulations to Diane Hayes, who's one of our amazing bus drivers and Eric Wapalusa, who is our Head Custodian at Mill Pond. So, we look forward to seeing you in March. Our February Staff Members of Month have not been announced. So, I am happy to share a little something with you about our two recipients. And that first one, the first one is Ray Kramer, who is an English teacher at the middle school. As a seventh grade ELA teacher, Ray brings his very best to his classroom and students each day. As an educational leader, he has taken on the new in-class replacement model of special education and not only makes it work, but he has made it successful. By the way, he was nominated by his peer Linda Kirk at the middle school. Mrs. Kirk goes on to say that outside of the classroom, Ray is involved in the LTMS drama production by coordinating the stage crew. He supervises after-school sporting events and he even DJs at school dances. Ray believes that all students can learn and he puts in a tremendous amount of time, effort and ability to do whatever he can to make that happen. In a moment, we're going to play the Staff Member of the Month video. But let me talk a little bit about our second recipient, who is Gianna Garrity. She is a science and English teacher at the high school, nominated by District Supervisor Tim Dowd. And he writes, "Ms. Garrity is an absolutely fabulous teacher who works as an in-class replacement teacher with English students and as a resource room science teacher. Her lessons are dynamic, multidisciplinary and include plenty of social, emotional learning opportunities. What's more is that these lessons have been wholly effective to aid in deep student learning through lessons that push for higher order thinking. Her co-teachers have routinely praised her work and have expressed sincere gratitude in being able to share a classroom with her. Ms. Garrity is a conscientious lesson planner whose instruction develops classroom environments conducive to her students' learning." So, congratulations, Gianna and Ray. And Mr. Lytle, I believe we have a video to play.
Here we are at Lacey Township Middle School. We're getting ready to celebrate another Staff Member of the Month. It's Mr. Kramer this month. He was nominated by Mrs. Kirk. We're going to surprise him right now. Come on. Excuse me, Mr. Kramer. You have an announcement.
Oh, boy.
Pause your music.
The saddest part of the movie?
All right, everyone. I have an announcement to make. Each month, the district chooses a staff member to recognize and honor as being selected as a Staff Member of the Month for the entire district. This month's winner is Mr. Kramer.
Very well deserved, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It's an honor and a pleasure to be your colleague. Ray, congratulations on being selected as a Staff Member of the Month. It's absolutely well deserved. I'm so impressed by you. You bring such enthusiasm. You, you know, make your classes so engrossing for all of your students. You incorporate technology and you really lift up our whole department. I can't say enough wonderful things about you as a colleague. And I'm so thrilled to also have you as a friend. Congratulations, Ray.
Hello, Ms. Garrity.
Hi.
Dude, you are terrible.
Uh, excuse me.
Dude, you're still in the first.
Thank you for letting me interrupt your class real quick. You may or may not know, the district does a Staff Member of the Month and Ms. Garrity's won Staff Member of the Month for the entire district for the month of February. So, congratulations, Ms. Garrity. Along with her receiving February's Staff Member of the Month, she's also been nominated for the high school for being Teacher of the Year. So, we're very excited to see the results of that. So, thank you for doing an amazing job here at the high school. Yeah? Congratulations.
Hi, my name's Tim Dowd. I'm a district supervisor here at Lacey Township Schools. And I'm so excited and honored to talk to you about Gianna Garrity. Gianna can teach any kid in her classroom. She's been involved in so many different instructional settings. And in each one of those settings, you can ask any one of her students and they'll tell you just how much she's opened their eyes to the world around them. Ask any one of her co-teachers and they'll talk to you about everything that she's brought into the classroom, from innovation to hard work to dedication and caring. And that's why we are so proud to have her as one of our Staff Members of the Month at Lacey Township Schools. Congratulations, Gianna.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Dowd and Mrs. Kirk for your nominations. Congratulations to Ray and Gianna. We look forward to seeing you in March as well. All right. I think it's been a while since we've played Lacey Minute. And once again, Mr. Merman and his students did a fabulous job producing February. So, Mr. Lytle, let's play our February Lacey Minute. Great. All right. Once again, thank you, Mr. Merman, to you and your students. You did a great job. And I am going to implore our staff to continue sending clips to Mr. Merman so that he can continue producing Lacey Minutes from now until the rest of the school year. So, thank you. All right, let's transition. Last November, we presented the Student Academic Achievement Report that primarily focused on NWA map assessments. Map assessments are our measurements of academic, academic progress assessments. We focused on the AP exam and the SAT. So, this is not going to be a surprise to anyone, but recent studies have indicated that the impact of the pandemic on K-12 student learning has been and will continue to be significant, leaving students on average five months behind in mathematics and four months behind in reading by the end of the 2020-21 school year. So, that's the school year that just ended. This past September, our students participate, participated in the Start Strong Assessments. The purpose of these assessments was for them to be able to be administered quickly online and be able to provide parents and teachers with immediate results about the supports that students would need in the current school year in math, English, language, arts and science. So, again, we administer those back in September. The turnaround was quick. Our teachers were able to use that data to drive instruction. So, tonight, Mr. Zalinski, Mrs. Amos and Mr. Dowd will present an overview of what our results look like. And they're also going to discuss some of the programs that we already have implemented and some that we plan to implement in the coming months. By the way, I was going to save these comments for my, one of my final comments, but it ties in. So, I'm going to mention it now. Last month, I mentioned that we were going to reopen our, supporting our students' parent survey. And we did reopen it. It does close tomorrow. We do have over a thousand responses and we could always use more. So, the link for that is on our website. But the purpose of the survey is that we're looking for feedback and collaboration from our parents on how we can best utilize the federal funds. And again, Mr. George is going to talk a little bit about that after the Start Strong Assessments. And, and we've already implemented some programs, but many of the programs are going to be implemented this summer and beyond. So, that is the feedback that we're looking for so that we can prioritize, prioritize our areas of need. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Zalinski, Mrs. Amos and Mr. Dowd. Thank you so much for putting this presentation together. The presentation will be posted on our website. It's a lot of information. We've gone through it quite a few times. Even I, at the end, I was like, wow, that's a lot. But it will be posted on our website. And so, I encourage our school community to take a look at it. And if, after reviewing it tonight and on the website, if you have questions, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us and we'll be more than happy to answer those questions. So, Mr. Zalinski, Mrs. Amos, Mr. Dowd, the floor is yours.
So, thank you, Dr. Clark. And this is a little bit more of a challenge being remote tonight. This is a presentation that we put together. Ms. Amos and Mr. Dowd are here. They're just going to jump in, I think, when they want to speak. Mr. Lytle, you're going to advance the slides for us. Miss, Dr. Clark gave us a little bit of the background of the Start Strong Assessments and how our students took them. We're going to go quickly through these slides. This will be posted afterwards. Since we're not taking questions tonight, please, tomorrow morning, I'll post these up on all of our school websites. It'll be a link. You can look them in more detail and ask more questions if you have them after we do this presentation. Always email myself, Ms. Amos or Mr. Dowd. Ms. Amos mostly for K to, K to six and Mr. Dowd for seven to 12 questions. So, advance the slide, Mr. Lytle. So, like Dr. Clark said, there's the Start Strong Assessments. We're given by the state of New Jersey. They gave these assessments because we could not give normal assessments and have not given normal assessments in two years. We will be giving normal, call them normal state assessments, plus a new state assessment this year in the spring. These assessments are not meant to judge the school district. They were strictly meant so that we could look at individual students and groups of students, see where they were after being sent home in March of 2020 to be fully remote. And then, of course, to be on difficult schedules last year, returning back to school, most returning back to school in April or May of last year and then returning to school this year. We gave the assessments, grades four through 10, math algebra one, geometry algebra two as well, and science certain grades as well. They were short, relatively short. They were all administered online. And our educators got the results back in October and we mailed the individual student reports home to parents in January. But I do know that anytime our parents have conferences with their teachers, they could reference these reports and look at them and look at really what the students had learned the previous year or had retained the previous year when they entered school in September. So, next slide, Mr. Lytle. If you are a parent, you saw something like this mailed home to you. We just left this up as a graphic. Most, and this is a third grade assessment, there were 20 questions. So, when we go through all the graphics, you're going to see three different colors for the next couple of minutes. Actually, there's a lot of slides. We're going to move pretty quick, though. So, the darker color means that the student had answered, in this, in the case of this exam, they had answered correctly between 12 and 20 questions and less support was needed for them in whatever subject area that they were given this exam in. When you see the lighter shade of purple, that would mean that some support might be needed based on the individual student. And then, the lightest shade of color here meant that strong support was needed because the student had failed to answer, in this case, nine or less questions correctly. And all the, all of the tests were a little bit different. So, this gauge will appear different on individual student reports that the parents got mailed home to them. Next slide, Mr. Lytle. So, the school district as a whole, and the way that we're viewing this, remember, is from the lens of individual students. You're getting a general report because that is a requirement from the state of New Jersey. It also does give you a general overview of what these assessments showed us back in September as a quick overview as well. Keep in mind that all students were sent home two years previous from March, almost all the way to June or through June. And then, they returned to school last year on a hybrid schedule for most of the year. And some students did not return to school and decided to stay remote for various reasons for the entire school year. So, what does this show us? So, the, the, the gauge that you're looking at and through the lens that you're looking at is you want the dark color and the medium color. So, I'll call it purple and light purple. You add those two together. Those are the students that don't need a whole lot of support. When you get to the lightest colors, those are the students that really needed a lot of support coming off of tough years and tough learning situations. So, when you look at these, you can, you can look at it from various lenses. That's the one that really concerns us. So, students who were in the lowest tier are the lowest bracket. So, as a district, and I'm, I'm spending a lot of time in this slide, but I won't spend as much time on the rest of the slides. As a district, you'll see that ELA would, we would look better or our students came back more prepared than they did in math or they did in science. With 32% of our students in ELA needing a lot of support, 47% of our students in mathematics needing a lot of support and 43%, and in science only gave three, three grades of exams for the science. So, 43% of them were, were in need of some strong support there. So, that's the colors that we're going to look at all night. As we go through these, we are going to go rather quickly. And the graphics will be posted. So, you can look a little bit deeper if you want to see the districts as a whole. But again, parents got these mailed home to them individually as well. Next slide, Mr. Lytle. So, we are going to move a little bit quicker. Here's the high school, ELA, math and science. And you can see those associated numbers there. As a rough gauge, whenever our darkest color and the medium color was over 50% meant that, you know, the, the, the school as a whole was a little bit better. And you were concentrating on the students that needed the help. ELA, 37%, math, 48% and science, 46%. Next slide, Mr. Lytle. What was interesting to us when we looked at geometry, which when we get to the maths, it's usually a little bit tougher. We saw some success with students who were home. Remember, middle, when we got to, and as I'm really kind of jumping ahead a little bit too, when you got to the middle school and the high school, attendance rates were the lowest of all of the schools. Mill Pond was, was closely behind, but our K-4s did a lot better. The results reflect that in a lot of ways when they came back to school in September. The students who attended school did better. The students that didn't attend school and stayed home remote did not do as well in many cases. And you'll see that throughout this presentation. And keep in mind, we are not gauged by the state on these results. These results were merely for our reference and to make sure that students were getting their individual needs met all the way back when we got these results in October. Okay, so that was geometry. Next, Tom. So, then we break out some of our groups. Okay, we are required to report some of our groups, not all of our groups because our size of those groups is not over, actually 10 is the number. So, our, those are Hispanic numbers. Next, Tom. Students with disabilities, or in this case, the state refers to them as having an IEP or a 504 plan. You can see as a reference, the You can see as a reference, the those students were needing more help than the school as a whole when we were looking at the other geometry students. Next, Mr. Lidle. And again, when you look at economically disadvantaged students and non-economically disadvantaged students, you're able to look at the differences and the stark differences of students who have economic difficulties at home and the students who do not have economic difficulties at home. Not a shock to anybody, but these are the students that we really have to spend a lot of time on and a lot of effort on because we know that there might be some different supports and different situations at home for them when you talk about economic differences. So pretty stark differences, but not a surprise to us when we when we looked at some of these results. Next, Mr. Lidle. We get into Algebra Two. It's the same routine again when we look at these results. Actually, these results were pretty good for Algebra Two. Ms. Amos and Mr. Dowd really spoke to this. Remember, too, these were older kids who had less disruptions to their education in a lot of cases. So in certain situations, we see less disruptions. These students were used to high school. They were Algebra Two students. They were juniors or sophomores. We always say they knew how to do school even when they're on when on remote. And when we get to the Algebra One results, I think it'll it'll really show you what I mean by that. Next, Mr. Lidle. So we go through the same thing again. We go through the Hispanic students. Next. The students with IEP, students with 504s. Again, you'll see what I'm talking about, and then go ahead, Mr. Lidle. You keep going. Okay, and then the interesting here that in Algebra Two, which again, I think attributes itself to to the level of these students being in school a lot, we didn't see great differences here as far as their readiness to attend school in September, coming coming off of a tough year. Next, Mr. Lidle. Algebra One, right? You talk about students who are attending high school for the first time. Last year, they were on an AB remote schedule. Actually, we were fully remote for a couple of weeks. So you see that we had a lot, a different result here when we got to Algebra One than we did with Algebra Two. Go on, Mr. Lidle. Again, the similar result here. Next. Students with disabilities and students with 504s. Next. And then the economic differences, which again, were similar. A little bit of surprise, but you know, knowing that the students who had Algebra One the previous year would need a lot of support going into their next math class. Okay, Mr. Lidle. Science. Okay, that's the grade twelve science. We only gave it in grade twelve. That's what the Start Strong was available in. Next. And then we broke out those differences. Keep going, Mr. Lidle. And the next slide. Okay. Next, I believe we'll see grade ten, ELA. You will see that the September exams, ELA, I'll say scored better than math or science. You know, whether it was our programming, whether it's our instruction, whether it's retention, whether it's it was, I'll call it easier, but nothing was easy, whether it was easier for our ELA teachers while we had remote students and AB students and lots of differences to interact or get get the point across. We do see better results with ELA, much better in some cases. Here's a good example. We have almost seventy-five percent of the school not needing much help and about thirty-one percent in strong need of support when we get to ELA. So Dowd, you wanna comment on the ELA side of things?
No, I just wanna say I agree. You know, we basically look at near seventy percent of our students there are looking at not needing very much support. So I think our English teachers did an incredible job or maybe had the kind of content that was more conducive to that virtual and remote setting.
But it also gives us pause to make sure that we're getting it done in all areas. Again, remember that these are not a measure of the school. They were just a measure of student readiness in September. So next, Mr. Lidle. Again, again, we break that out, and you know, these follow what the general slide said. Go on. You have your your special ed students and your 504s. Next. And then the difference is in the economic disadvantage versus none for grade ten. Okay, move on. Okay, grade nine slide, which was ELA and science. Because remember, the math is specific, so that we go through that. You see difference, you see some stark differences between the students who less support was needed, the darker color. You see a large band of some support, you know, which actually eclipses the ELA side a little bit. And remember, when we looked at that gauge, you could score one question one way or the other. You'll see some of these differences as we go on. Go on, Mr. Lidle. And then we broke that out. Again, remember, these will be posted if you wanna look at them in more in depth. Keep going. And the next one. We keep going with these results. Okay, ELA and math at the middle school. You can compare side by side how ELA looked and how math looked. Next. Grade eight. Okay, grade seven should be next. Oh, we break out grade eight, excuse me. So we'll break that out into the different subgroups. Keep going. Next, please. And then grade seven. Okay, again, you know, really looking at eclipsing that fifty percent mark and then how far you get beyond that mark. But you know, these individual student reports is where I always say the rubber met the road, where we were able to look at students and look at their, how they did with these questions as we went along. Next. And we broke that out. You keep going, Mr. Lidle. Next. And then I think we move on to grades four to six is the general slide. Okay, you can just pause there for a moment. You can see the differences of where we are from ELA to math to science. Next, please. Grade six. We'll break out those subgroups. So I can't see anybody, but I get the feeling that everybody gets the trend here of how we're doing. Keep going, please. Next. Grade five. Grade five was it was a real, go back one just for a minute, Mr. Lidle. We were only twenty-two percent in grade five, and just to note that these were our grade four learners going into grade five. So grade four ELA, very strong. You know, so you know, again, on the other side of the flip of the coin, too, and Ms. Amos, you might wanna talk to this, you know, see what we were doing right while we were on an AB schedule remote last year. Did you wanna comment on that, Michelle?
Um.
Sorry, I know we're all unmuting.
I know. I was looking for my mute button. No, I I and I do think there's a lot to what you said, Mr. Zalinski, about the ELA instruction lending itself a little better. And just as you spoke about in the high school, these elementary students had a little more time in school before they were affected by this. Are you're gonna see some trends with our youngest learners, not in in the Start Strong, but in the NWEA, where they they have been affected because they weren't, they they haven't had a very traditional school experience at all to this point.
Yeah, it's 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 really proven itself true how being in school can be the difference maker, even by these results. Not something we didn't know. We knew that. So move on, Mr. Lidle. Okay, we broke that out. You keep going. And keep going. And I believe we'll see grade four next. So here's ELA math in grade four. So they were in third grade last year. Go on. We broke that out. And again, continue to break that out. So we're gonna have a very brief discussion on where are we now? Because part of this is and part of Start Strong and what the road that it led us down is what are you doing about the problem? Just very briefly, again, we will post these if you keep moving on, Tom. We've done this before. We've talked about our MAP tests, our NWEA tests that we give every year. We give them in grades K to ten at this point. In some cases, we give them three times a year. In some cases, we give them two times a year. And Michelle, just talk briefly about the NWEA, and then we'll move these slides quickly.
Sure, the NWEA, it it's the one metric that we have been giving consistently for a while, even when the state tests have changed. You know, Start Strong came in. That was a completely different assessment than anything they've taken before. This remains the metric that we can look to for consistency. And the state tests are not self-leveling like the NWEA is. It it's a very personalized experience that meets the students where they are and sees how far they've grown. It gives us a RIT score, which is their instructional level today, ready to instruct today level, and it allows us to look at their growth from that point and and see, we can really drill down within the MAPS test and and look at what skills and and standards they need support with to be able to get move on in their learning.
Right, and we'll illustrate that with the slide. You can move on, Mr. Lidle. Okay, again, this is described to RIT score. We'll post this. Next slide. So again, and and Michelle and Tim can speak to this. You know, when the the key to some of the NWA stuff is that we can compare ourselves to normative data. So basically roughly translates into how are you doing at grade level. We represent it here as the the dark bars and the lighter bars is us. The light blue is how we did in the fall. The yellow is how we did in the winter. So we're looking for that to go up, obviously. And we're, we always look at how close it is to the normative data at grade level. Are you at grade level or better? We show you as a as a whole, but teachers use this with individual students to see where they are and where they're deficient or doing well in the various areas. So we'll just point out briefly as we move along. Sometimes we were close to the normative data for the winter. In most cases, we've improved from the fall, which is what we wanna say, of course. Next slide, Mr. Lidle. So then here's the math. We wanna be close or better than the black line, remember, and we want to improve from the blue line to the yellow line. We wanna go up. Okay, so and then we'll have spring data, which will be the next bar when we get to the spring. Next, Tom. Reading. Not as heavy in the gains. Next. Again, some gains. Very close to the normative data in all of these, which is good. It's a good sign. We'd like to be better. Next. Reading. And what's the next slide? Is math? Yeah. Okay, high middle school is is conducting their winter assessment now. We don't have those results. Next slide just shows you where we were in the fall compared to normative data, close, which is a good sign, and then math. All right, so when we get those winter results, we'll be able to compare, which will be about two weeks from now. They're doing their testing right now. And the high school does not do winter assessment. Semesters mess us up. We do some, we do a pre and a post for Algebra One. And again, we're closing those results now to see how we did because we're on semester block. Okay, next, Tom. All right, key to this, and Tim and Michelle are gonna chime in here. Key to this is what kind of intervention strategies have we employed? Because again, people would look at your results as we do. We need to have a lot of work done here. We have students who have come off two really tough years, not that this year is any better for some of them. There's adjustment difficulties, new teachers, new schools, getting back to doing school, getting back to regular school. So what have we done? And this will bleed over into Mr. DeGeorge's presentation a little bit on what we spent our Ester monies on. Some of these are Ester funds, some of these are not. We've added three instructional coaches, K to six, who strictly coach our teachers on how their instruction and how they're impacting their instruction for our students. We've hired a pre-K master teacher that oversees our pre-K curriculums and make sure that we're implementing that correctly. And I'm hoping all parents who are listening know that we have a free after-school tutoring program. All they have to do is contact their their student's teacher, guidance counselor, principal, anybody. That happens four days a week all year long at all grades. We hired a full-time guidance counselor at Milpon. We hired a college and career counselor at the high school to make sure that those students were being serviced. Those, we had over two hundred-plus students in our our summer academic enrichment program. We'll be doing that again this summer. So parents who are interested in that, make sure that you, and that's free. Make sure that parents pay attention when we start releasing that. Reading intervention, Ms. Amos. Michelle.
Sorry, couldn't find my mute button. So we've implemented several several different layered reading interventions. We have a fast-forward program that runs before and after school depending on the elementary school and their start time. We have some, several teachers that we have already trained in Orton Gillingham that are running before and after school intervention. And then we are training a large number of our teachers in Orton Gillingham reading strategies for implementation in the classroom and additional supports. And I wanted to say, too, I am very pleased with how much participation we've been getting in the tutoring program. And to your point, Mr. Zalinski, we had a lot of students participate last summer in our summer program, and that's available to everyone. So we encourage you. We got great feedback. And we encourage all parents to to get their students involved this summer in that as well.
Right, and on the right side of the slide, we're, we are going to be announcing soon. We just working on it. We're gonna do some social emotional learning after-school program. We'll put that out to our parents very shortly, and that's as a result, a lot of our survey that Dr. Clark referenced, because parents were requesting that. So we made sure that we made room for that program. We have a social worker hired at the high school for our adult learners, our special ed adult learners. Tim, you wanna talk about reading apprenticeship?
Yeah, absolutely. To to sort of bolster the after-school tutoring that we have, which is a tremendous opportunity for families, just on the value alone. If someone was to try to try to hire a a private tutor, it would be quite expensive. And so we're very happy to provide after-school tutoring for students in a variety of subject areas. The Reader's Apprenticeship is an initiative. We have the high school right now targeting basically reading stamina and resiliency for ninth and tenth grade students in ELA and social studies. So further blending those two disciplines to have a triangulated approach to help students with reading, to get them more comfortable with reading for the long term. And that will translate in all subject areas. So we're we're really, we have teachers working very hard in in that program in their classrooms, as well as our basic skills program, seven through twelve, which I think is more robust than it's ever been. So we're doing a lot of really good work for students who need a variety of levels of support.
Yeah, we brought all of our, and that's the last piece there, all of our K to twelve basic skills instructors are now full-time. Part-time was was not as effective. We brought them all on full-time to address the learning needs of our students. Mr. Lidle, next, which I believe might be it. Okay, so that's it. I know Mr. George is up next. I wanna know how many people logged off while we were talking, please. And then we'll move on from here. Nobody found me funny right there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zalinski, Mr. Dowd, and Mrs. Amos. One of the things that I just wanna add, and you did a great job presenting. I know we rely very heavily on our NWEA map tests. The Start Strong was a stopgap measure that the State Department of Education used to get us information quickly in preparation for this school year that we're in. But as we continue this march toward normalcy, we are going to be administering the New Jersey Student Learning Standards assessments in the spring. And I am hoping that we are going to be able to start using that data to return to a baseline by which we can then compare student achievement this time next year. So I know that was a very long presentation. Again, we went through the slides very quickly, but I do encourage our families to take a look at this on our website and to submit questions or give us a call. We would be happy to make ourselves available to answer them. So thank you so much. And Mr. Zalinski mentioned this already. The next presentation is I'm gonna ask Mr. George, DeGeorge, to talk about Ester grants. So last month, I mentioned that we were going to do this and that we would provide the school community with an overview of the Ester grants. By the way, Ester, and education is good with acronym, stands for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund in response to the pandemic. And so there have been a lot of questions about where we're spending this money, how we're spending this money, and how we will spend the money. So Mr. DeGeorge put together this slideshow slideshow presentation, and I know Mr. Zalinski and I are going to jump in there when it comes to the curriculum topics to talk a little bit about what some of these topics mean. So Mr. DeGeorge, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Dr. Clark. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for hanging in. This is twenty-five. Thanks, Dr. Clark. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for hanging in. This is a twenty-five slide presentation in total. And so we'll begin also with uh the fact that this presentation, along with the uh student achieving presentation, will be on our website. Uh, tomorrow. Next. So let's say a word about federal grants. A a grant in general is money given by either an entity or a person for a specific purpose. Right, that's the, that's the important part of of the word grant. Federal grants is it money from the federal government, which passes through. The states, New Jersey being one, and to the school districts. And again, for a specific purpose. The two large federal pass-through grants that we get every year is from the N C L B, you know, Child Left Behind Grant. And the special education focused I D E A grant. Next, please. As Dr. Clark said, she defined what Esther is. Uh, and the purpose of it is to really help school districts. Respond to COVID and the impact that COVID has had and continues to have really on uh our district. So Esther comes to us in three separate components. Esther one, uh, called the Corona Relief and Economic Security Act. Esther two, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, and Esther three. Uh, known as the American Rescue Plan Act. Next, please. Esther one. And we're going to give you the same information for each of the three components of Esther. It was established in March of twenty twenty, so it's some time ago now. New Jersey itself received three hundred million as a pass-through. Of that number. Our district received just over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the grant period runs through this coming September of twenty twenty-two. Next. It's hard to read on the screen, I know, uh, and you can read this on your own. But these are the allowable uses or the specific purposes of Esther one funds. And I'm just going to read the bolded. Uh, to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus. To help teachers and school leaders with resources that they need to help individual schools. For training and professional development, for personal protective equipment, P P E, that's what we call it. And supplies to sanitize and clean our school district, schools, uh, to provide meals. To provide technology for online learning, to provide mental health services. To help with activities related to summer learning and after-school programs. Those are the major allowable uses. Next. So before we jump into the budget component and where the money uh goes. It's important for us, because we're going to talk a lot about, we're going to use these terms over and over again in the next few slides, some budget terms. First, appropriation. Really, it's that amount of the grant that we receive that we are allocating. Toward a specific allowable purpose. An encumbrance, really, in simplest terms, is when we lock up uh part of that allocation. In the form of a purchase order, which is a legal document. It legally commits the district to making that purchase of goods or services. And then, of course, expenditure is when that purchase order uh gets liquidated through the receipt. Of the services or goods, and then the payment of those services or goods. Next. This is a uh snapshot of the Esther one funds, the five hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars. You can see, there's a uh, again, Dr. Clark and Mr. Zalinski will jump into the instructional side, but I'll talk about a couple of things. First, again, P P E, right? The vast majority of the money was spent on disinfectant and and foggers or sprayers to help clean classrooms and common areas. Uh, gowns and gloves for nurses and for other uh. Staff members who engage in uh with students. And then about fifty-five hundred dollars or less than one percent of the total Esther one money. Was spent on face coverings for students and staff. The only other thing I want to speak about here is the unemployment number. Uh, you might ask, well, that seems odd, doesn't it? But there was an impact. On uh the district because it needed to furlough some staff members. And as a result, uh, through the COVID pandemic. And as a result, our unemployment claims and responsibilities skyrocketed. So we were able to use a portion of this funds to help resolve that unbudgeted, uh, unanticipated. Increase in our unemployment claims. So the rest really is instructional. So if if uh either one of my colleagues wants to jump in and talk about that, that would be great.
And in generality, you know, uh, we work very closely with Mr. De George. You know, he asked us how, what do we need to help students? And remember, to almost more than two years ago now, we were desperate. Like, we didn't know what to do in some cases. So when we said we're on remote learning, you'll see Chromebooks there. When you see teacher salaries, you're going to, that applied to nurses as well. We hired an additional nurse. We hired a student assistance counselor for the high school, uh, and got them up to speed. We're trying to help our students and help them go there. We look for software support, because remember, everybody was home. So we purchased for the first time news, New Zealand A. Uh, we, uh, the fault software system helped us track our Chromebooks. So everything works together. Um, in the response that we needed with the COVID pandemic.
All right, Dr. Clark, do you have anything?
Uh, I'm going to talk a little bit about the S R two funds when we get there.
Right, so the the takeaway here, though, is that uh, because it's just about up all entire. Uh, amount of appropriations for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Esther one has already been spent. So there's no more uh Esther one funds available at this point. Next, please. Esther two, same information. Established not too long after, in December of twenty twenty. New Jersey received one point two billion dollars uh as a pass-through. And of that amount, the district received two point three million dollars. That is broken down into a uh uh core allocation or the basic Esther two funds. Funds for learning acceleration, funds for mental health support services. And again, important to note that this is where we start to get a little bit of longevity on the way the grant period runs. So Esther two funds you're going to uh see are going to span two school years. We have until September of twenty twenty-three to uh expand these funds. So it's important to note, and you'll see what I'm talking about on the next couple of slides. Mr. Lidle? Again, allowable uses or the specific purposes that we can spend the money on. The core money is the same uh allowable uses as the S R one funds with the following additions. Fundings to address learning loss, to address facility repairs and improvements, and uh including H V A C. The learning acceleration component is for summer learning activities. And then the mental health and support services are professional development and for mental health supports and services. Next. Same presentation. This is a two-slide, it's it spans two slides because it's a, it's a good amount of money. And again, I'm going to speak to the non-instructional components. Uh, of this allocation, we've appropriated just about five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars toward H V A C. Where uh it will be in the most important critical areas where students mostly uh gather things that we were not able to do. Up until now, because just didn't have the funds to do it. So we're able to uh purchase these uh H V A C components. And you will see uh in a coming uh agenda or two, maybe next month, that we will uh seek to award. Uh, the contract for H V A C work. And again, you'll see, as we do, anytime there's a grant. That we're spending money on in the resolution on the agenda. You will see uh that it is connected clearly to whatever grant. In this case, it will say the Esther two uh funds. Uh, late buses, I know that if you were here for the first portion of the meeting, you've heard. Our finance committee chair, Mrs. McAvoy, speak to an update on the late buses. Late buses are important. They are connected to providing our students with after-school activities. Which are even more important in this uh hopefully soon post-pandemic era where it had an impact on kids. Where they weren't able to attend after-school activities, and we were not able to uh provide transportation home for those students. Because we did not have the funds, and now we do. Um, again, P P E or personal protective equipment, the same thing as the S R one funds. In this case, uh, we spent an additional six thousand four hundred dollars approximately. Uh, or less than one percent of the total grant on face coverings for. Students and staff where we uh ran out under the S R one allocation. Uh, the only other thing, I guess I'm going to talk about a couple of things. Uh, well, one thing on this slide, the awning at the high school. Mr. Zalinski worked with our high school principal, Mr. Brandis, recognizing the need for students to. Have a space outside where in the fresh air they can congregate, eat lunch, and hold certain instructional activities. So he was instrumental in working with uh with me to get an awning at the high school in the courtyard. Uh, which is going to be very, very important, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we will see that actually installed. Uh, the rest really is instructional uh on this slide, so if uh colleagues want to jump in, that'd be great.
Yeah, what you're going to start to see between Esther two and Esther three, from the first minute when we put our team together, um, we thought long-term. Uh, we knew when the grants would go uh over multiple years, so we really thought long-term recovery. So we thought about hiring individuals for three years. We talked about making improvements that would last more than three years, trying to keep things moving um along those lines, but we really thought long-term. Um, you saw on the slide, uh, when we talked about things that we had done at the end of my presentation, you saw that we hired people. Instructional coaches, full-time B S I teachers, a lot of different people have gone into this. Where um they are all about recovering that, I'll call it core instruction, as we use the word core. For our students who didn't attend school, who weren't able to come to school and weren't able to learn, let's call it in the normal fashion. So we really thought long-term. We thought about master teachers. We thought about instructional coaches, thought about all those different things. Um, we've even thought about class size to make sure that we can address that when we can. Um, you know, moving some people to regular budget and spending the money here. So um, you'll see those as the slides go on, but that's how the money's been spent.
And um.
I'm sorry, Dr. Clark.
No, that's okay. And a lot of this also ties into some of the comments that we made during the uh Start Strong assessment presentation as well. And it lends itself to the after-school programs that uh we're running. Um, and again, the Promethean boards and Mr. Zalinski, I'm sorry if you already mentioned this, but they are aging out. And this was a good opportunity for us to update um our technology. So I just wanted to add that last piece.
It became, it became critical to us, because when you're trying to recover learning and you've got a a fuzzy board, it didn't play well. This is an opportunity, just like you said, for us to make that improvement.
Right, and and connecting that to tonight's agenda, uh, you'll see later on the disposal of the. Many old Promethean boards that we have and we desperately needed to replace. And an agenda or two ago, we did were approve the the purchase of new Promethean boards. Uh, which we're hopefully going to get pretty soon. Again, the resolution clearly stated that the purchase was made through the S R two funds. Next, please. So the only thing I'm going to say here, and really, again, not surprisingly. The bulk of this is instructional. I I'll just speak briefly about the frontline central component. Frontline is our uh human resources and personnel component uh software. We really needed to add another component to it, which helps us with the onboarding uh of new employees. And the assisting of uh current employees with gathering and and getting to certain information that that we need to get to them. This was directly related to the issues that H R faced in the COVID process. So uh, we were able to use a portion, a very small portion of these funds uh to help with that. And the rest is really on instruction. Will, do you want to talk anymore about that?
Oh, I'd not, but I want to talk about COVID testing, because I just want to note that we went to great lengths to uh uh offer additional COVID testing. Uh, outside of the state program uh for our staff members as well. Um, so you'll see that line item there as well. Uh, and that was at some really great effort to get that done as well, too.
Right. Dr. Clark, anything?
Okay.
Thank you. So before we move on, it's important, you're going to not be surprised when I say this. The Esther one funds a hundred percent spent because the grant period is just about over. Uh, if you do the math on this at home, uh, about thirty-five percent or so of the two point one million dollars so far. Has been either encumbered through a purchase order or already uh expended, uh, because we already have those goods or services. So we are uh slowing down a little bit, but again, this is spanning a couple of school years. Next. Alright, learning acceleration. Uh, this is one hundred percent instruction, so Mr. Zalinski, if you wouldn't mind.
So you're seeing, so you just see the line items of instruction. So summer teacher salaries, when we did our summer program. Uh, any instructional supplies that were incurred, um, non-instructional supplies, um, any consulting that we had done. Um, you know, we we have training monies for P D for professional development. Um, the buses needed gas for the summer. You'll see that line item in there. So, you know, everything is there that we need to to pull these programs off that would never have fit in our regular budget. Um, that'll be the big challenge. I want to note that, that when these grants run out, that's going to be a big challenge for us. What programs can stay and what programs are have to go, because the money is finite. Um, it does run out. But uh, again, like you said, you're seeing the learning acceleration piece of the grant. How do we get the learning back on track?
Yes, exactly. And uh, Dr. Clark, anything?
I'm good for right now. Thank you.
So about sixty-five percent, again, if you're doing the math. Uh, of this allocation or appropriation has already been either encumbered or locked up. Through a committed purchase order or already spent, as Mr. Zalinski said, because we use uh a portion of this funds for the. Uh, previous summer program. Next. Mental health and support services, again, not surprising, one hundred percent instruction. So uh, Mr. Zalinski, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we hired, we hired a psychologist last year. Um, we replaced that with a social worker this year. But again, both of them are trained in mental health services, uh, and we made sure that uh we addressed that. We are instituting our new after-school uh uh social emotional learning program. Um, so in Esther, I believe that's more in Esther three, uh, that'll be in there. Um, it may not be a line item in there, but again, mental health services is throughout.
And I just uh do want to add that that after-school program, the three individuals that we're approving tonight, um, just work so well together. Um, and our newest addition to the child study team member uh has taken a great lead in uh some of these programs. So we're really excited to make uh this uh recommendation on tonight's agendas. So, good stuff.
Yes, and you'll see that if about fifteen percent, uh, as of today, and again, these numbers we're looking at are. Of a couple of days ago, as recent as that, and will change with the hires tonight. Uh, the encumbered and expended com- components will increase and and the grant, this portion of the grant at least will be uh fully liquidated very soon. Next, please. Alright, Esther three. Uh, very recent, March of twenty twenty-one. New Jersey received over two point seven billion dollars from the federal government of that amount. Uh, we received uh part one, uh, we've seen a bunch of different components. Three point two million dollars in what we'll call part one, uh, one point six million dollars in part two. Then there are accelerated learning coach uh component, evidence-based, summer learning enrichment and evidence-based. Comprehensive beyond-the-day uh activities and mental health support staffing. And the grant period is another year, right? So uh, Esther two was September twenty twenty-three. This Esther three component runs uh. Beyond that, a year beyond that to twenty twenty-four. Next. Allowable uses, again, the same allowable uses as Esther one. And Esther two plus, addressing learning loss. Again, summer learning, extended day programs, after-school programs, extended school year programs. Funds to respond to students' academic, social, and emotional needs. Uh, S E L is is a big thing in education these days. Uh, the accelerated learning uh component for professional learning and coaching activities. Next, please. The evidence-based. The evidence based enrichment component for social emotional skills, again, tutorial services. Professional learning for educators, next please. The evidence based beyond the school day force against social emotional skills. Tutorial services and professional learning for educators, and then finally. The mental health component is not surprisingly, mental health supports and services. So if we can go to the next slide. So I'll say a couple of things about the. Non instructional components and then turn it back over to my esteemed colleagues. Here again is HVAC with this second allocation. Third allocation of S R rather, we're able to expand the HVAC replacement upgrades project. Were able to use more money for technology for student learning. Were able to help our cafeteria services out because of because of COVID, and again, I know we spoke a little bit about it last meeting. Our food services department fails or succeeds based upon the number of meals served. Obviously, if the school was closed during COVID, which it was. We were able to, not able to provide all the meals and consequently inadvertently ran into. A loss situation which we spoke about last meeting when we spoke about the operations of food services. Who were able to use this money to help because it was clearly losses that were related to pandemic. Again, PPE, same as before, more foggy or machines, more. Disinfectant, more rubber gloves, and again, less than one percent of the money on any kind of mask. HR secretary, we spoke about the HR software before. Our HR is very understaffed to begin with, but very good at what they do. That we're able to take this portion of this funds and. Bring on some at least hopefully ten through twenty twenty four, some staff. To help HR process all these COVID driven HR issues. Which are, you know, significant for an already beleaguered and understaffed HR function. The rest, Mr. Zelinski, Dr. Clark, is up to you.
Yeah, you're seeing more, more of the same, but more of the same good things, hiring people, putting them in places where they're necessary. And making sure that they're impactful. So more of the same BSI teachers, coaches, school psychologists, social workers, just again, you're seeing the different grants. And it gets extended out, so we have these people for multiple years, and hopefully some of them can remain in the core budget moving forward after that.
Right. Next, please. So this is the balance of the S R three, part one, part two funds. And you can see that most of it again, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Zelinski. He spoke earlier about the gasoline that we were able to use some of this money. To help pay for the increased cost of that and the increased use of buses to deliver things back and forth. Very small infinitesimal amount for gasoline. But Mr. Zelinski, do you want to speak anymore about the instructional components?
Yeah, you're seeing in this slide, you're seeing programs that we purchased, the IXL learning that is used at the middle school, learning at a Z program. The lead program is with the Lacy Township Police Department, we're having a little trouble getting that off the ground because of schedules. We're working on that, and again, some purchases of some other programs, the Big Brother Big Sister program, which I think Dr. Clark can speak to a little bit. You know, all things that we can fund to get our students back on track and get them more, just make school better for them.
Yeah, and the Big Brother Big Sister program, we are in our second year in implementing this program and we're looking to expand that. Beyond the Mill Pond and the high school to include the middle school, so it's a program that. Has met with tremendous success and just a great way to partner our younger students with our older students, so.
Right, so again, not surprisingly, because as I mentioned at the top, as we go through the. S R funds, the components of S R funds here in S R three. At this point, we have about one percent of the funds encumbered or spent, but that's not surprising because it's a relatively recent. Allocation that we received and Mr. Zelinski, Dr. Clark and instructional crew. Has developed a plan and you'll see that kind of getting rolled out over the next six months or so. And as I mentioned, when we last spoke about HVAC. In a maybe next month, I think we'll be in a position to award a contract, so you'll see. About two million dollars of that money that will be allocated to awarding that work through the S R funds. Next. From here on in, the accelerated learning coach educator, it's a hundred percent. Instructional, so I don't know if Mr. Zelinski wants to talk to these other components of it.
No, it's the same, it's it's.
Yeah, it's again, we're looking at instructional coaches desperately needed and the benefits that are related. Next, please. And hiring, using some funds to hire teachers for summer learning. But again, that'll be coming up this summer, next please. Evidence based beyond the school day activities, teachers, supplies in that after school program that we're, they're looking at. Creating. Coming soon, again, nothing spent on that, and then finally. Next, please. Psychologist, social worker and the training for the entire child study team. That I know Dr. Clark spoke about that additional hire, which is desperately needed in our child study team. Environment, again, all of this will start getting expanded over the next few months, next please. So summing it up, right, it's a little bit of an eye popper, the total of S R funds received. Or allocated to us eight point one million dollars of that amount, right? The five percent was the S R one all spent. The remaining ninety five percent of S R funds are in the S R two and S R three buckets. A lot of that is, some of that is is encumbered, a little bit of that is expended, but again, because. It has two, up to two more years or more to expend the funds that. Relate to the programs that have been developed by our administrative team, it just shouldn't be surprising that you're looking at those kinds of numbers. So here's the takeaway in in my view. We received eight point one million dollars allocated to us. Over ninety seven percent of that money is allocated. To instruction or the improvement of the instructional environment desperately needed and. I know I'm not going to be here next year, but I share Mr. Zelinski's concern and Dr. Clark's concern. That once these awesome programs are created and these improvements are made. The challenge that remains now is for the district's administrative team to find some way to. Continue them past when S R funds run out. Next. That is all that I have, again, I will reiterate, Dr. Clark will probably say that. If there are any questions, just email us and we'll try our best to respond to them, but I hope that. You see that the district is being very, very responsible with its allocation, grateful for it. And using the vast majority of it to help our kids, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. George, thank you, Mr. Zelinski for jumping in and talking about. The instructional piece, and I also want to thank Mr. Dow and Mrs. Amos because they were instrumental in. Helping us plan for the instructional components, as has been the rest of the administrative team, so we do not work. On these things alone, their input is valuable and we welcome it, so. All right, I know it's been a long night, just a couple of final comments. Last month, I mentioned that we would be holding a listening and learning forum for parents in the near future. The purpose of that forum is to discuss hot topics. And have a collaborative and informative discussion on those topics, so we plan on having several of these from now until the end of the school year and beyond. I'm happy to announce that our first session is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, March tenth. More information will be forthcoming via email and automated call, so be on the lookout for that and it'll describe. You know, the format, the location. And we're going to do it a little differently, but I think it's going to be very helpful to those parents who want to have that dialogue with us. About many topics beyond masks, you know, we hope that it can be academic. You know, we're going to talk about lunches and many other topics, so be on the lookout for that announcement. Also, I'm also happy to announce that we've scheduled several parent universities in the next few months. The next one, we had one in the fall, the next one is Tuesday, February twenty second at six o'clock PM, it's going to be. In the high school lecture hall, the session is primarily going to be geared for our elementary parents. And will provide information on navigating kindergarten through fourth grade student assessments. And so certainly lends itself to the presentation that we made tonight, so that information is already posted on our website, so please take a look at that. And finally, Mr. George, I believe you have some brief information to share with us about student transportation.
Yes, Dr. Clark, thank you. There has been some interest, I guess, some some questions concerned about student transportation, so. We thought it'd be a good idea for us to give you a very brief overview of. What transportation really looks like, so. To begin with, we'll start with the with the obvious, the Lacy Township School District is a public. School district, which means that we are required by law to do two things, the first is. To provide a free education to all school age children who live in town. The other thing that we're required to do is to provide free transportation. To any of the school age children who live in town and attend our schools. The various grades bands have different mileage requirements under the law, but basically. In layman's terms, if a student resides far enough away from his or her school. Again, as dictated by the law, then we are required to provide that transportation free. If however, a student is by law determined to live a little not far enough away. Then we have a few years ago created what's called a subscription busing program. Where again, students who attend our schools in our district may, if they so choose. Walk or they could subscribe, see if the one is one available on the buses that run in between our schools. There's another kind of school called a vocational school and examples would be Alps. Mates, PAA, among others, we now have a hundred and seventy five students. Who attend a vocational school from our district, so. The important thing to begin with is a vocational school is also a public school. Which means that the transportation rules are pretty much the same, so. If a vocational school is located far enough away from a student's residence. Then the district is required to provide transportation to that vocational school. That's pretty much the takeaway, it's a public school, we have a hundred seventy five children. All of them receive transportation because the public school is far enough away that they attend. The third and final is a non-public school, right, that's important, examples include Donovan Catholic, Saint Joe's. Saint Mary's and the list is is longer than that. A non-public school is not. A public school, right, you may think that's that stands to reason, but it's important to know, so the rules are different. For transportation, if a non-public school. Is more than twenty miles away from a student's residence, the district has no legal responsibility. To transport students to that school. If however, a non-public school is less than or equal to twenty miles from a student's residence. The district has the responsibility to to do one of two things. If the district is able to create a route. In it's in within the district that costs less than the legal maximum. For non-public students, which currently is a thousand dollars. Then we are required to provide that route to the non-public school students. And we do, in some cases, are able to devise routes that cost less than a thousand dollars per student. If however, and this is important, if however, we are not able to create a route in house. To transport students, which is less than a thousand dollars per student, we are required. Instead of transporting the students, we are required to pay the student's family. What's called aid in lieu of transportation, and that again, is that thousand dollars, so. It's not that we are opting to do one or the other, we are required by law. To take the steps that we take for all of our in district public school students. All of our vocational school students and all of the students who have chosen to attend non-public schools. So that's the very brief summary of the roles and responsibilities. The transportation department does a great job. About this time of year, we are reaching out to parents and letting them know what we think is coming for next year. And to be on guard to take perhaps appropriate action. And then more to come over the summer months, but really, Dr. Clark, that is really the basics of it and I hope that. It was helpful.
Yes, it was, thank you, Mr. George. And Board President Polino, that concludes my comments, thank you to all of you who presented with me tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Clark, thank you, Mr. George, Mr. Zelinski, Mr. Dow, Miss Amos. For sticking around and giving us a lot of insight of what's going on with our. Student evaluations and our grant stuff and so forth, at this time, before we go to public comment, if I could. Ask Mr. Armato to give us the spotlight on students, sir?
Alumni.
Right, alumni students, yes.
Thank you. Real nice of Mrs. McAvoy to allow me to do this, these are two people that I know very well. And it was my pleasure to interview them and learn more about them. So it is a great pleasure, I recognize, two awesome alumni of Lacy Township High School. First, I'd like to recognize Stacy Rogers Maza, Stacy is a nineteen ninety six graduate of Lacy Township High School. And Stacy who wanted to, who wanted to be a nurse, enrolled at Hoshin County Community College Nursing School and graduated in two thousand and one. After graduation, Stacy went to work at Kimball Hospital in Lakewood and contributed in the ER ward. And after Kimball, Stacy moved on to Atlantic Care, is currently serving as the clinical supervisor and educator. Stacy is also pursuing a master's degree in nursing leadership. Stacy is married to another Lacy Township High School alum in John Maza, and they still reside in Lacy with their two children, Anthony, who was a freshman on the basketball team. And Matt, who is at the middle school and plays basketball for our travel team. If you know Stacy, she's one of the kindest, most genuine people you'll ever meet, and she's always willing to lend a hand at all the people that she meets, so. I'd like to really thank her for all she does for us, the community, and just a great person. The next person I'd like to recognize is Lisa Dimler Mooney. Lisa graduated from Lacy Township High School in nineteen ninety two while also playing basketball and softball for the Lions. Lisa went on to attend OCC and then Trenton State where she also played basketball and softball while pursuing her degree in education. After graduating from Trenton, Trenton, Lisa began her education career in New Egypt. And was eventually hired as the basketball and softball coach, see a little trend here. Lisa, I mean, Lacy Township was lucky when Lisa moved on from New Egypt and began teaching in Lacy in two thousand and ten. Lisa has taught at Lenoka Harbor School, Mill Pond, and is now Forkwood River School. Here's a fun fact, Lisa's father and mother were instrumental in all Lacy Township athletics. Her dad has a softball field at Hebrew Park named after him, and he was also instrument instrumental in developing the late, the infamous league courts. Lisa is married to my friend Ed Mooney and they have three children, Michaela is a Lacy graduate playing basketball at Centenary College. Maris is a starter on our freshman basketball team, and Mason is at the middle school and is a key contributor on the middle school basketball team. And our travel basketball team as well as an avid golfer. Congratulations to Lisa for all her accomplishments. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Motto. So Mr. Motto's report on our alumni will be posted on the website. So if those folks would like to go back and take a look at that, and if any parents or friends or family out there have some stories they'd like to submit to the board to present some alumni graduates and the field and what they're doing, we'd be happy to accept them. So at this time, we're going to open the floor to public comment. Uh, Mr. George, do you have the?
Sure. Go ahead. An audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand virtually, and when called upon, state name, address, or affiliation and intention to make statement. Comments shall be addressed to the board president. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No audience member may be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comments only. The purpose of the board meeting itself is to have our business transacted in public. It is not a school board's function to do business with the public. Our order of business in public is done to do our own business. So therefore, everyone is entitled to make a comment. However, there will be no questions answered and no comments by the board in response to comments made by the public. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command that can be followed, and that chain of command is available on our district website.
Thank you, Mr. George. Well, okay, Mr. Lidle. We will take our first public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Plino. At this time, if you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom app or dial star nine. If you're calling in via telephone. And at this time, we'll recognize Lorraine Sokolowski. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address for the record, and begin your public comment.
Lorraine, I have one kid in the district and one kid that I pulled. We'll see if the tyrant truly drops the mask mandate on March seventh. Even if he does, we cannot just ignore or forget what took place the past two years. So I'm still going to address the issues I had planned because he can change his mind at any time, and we're still waiting guidance. It was said that meetings should not be moved off-site because kids deserve to receive awards and recognition at their home. The word home is different from the word house or a building you live in. Home implies warmth, welcoming, belonging, a place that you're drawn back to. School no longer feels like a home or welcoming place. The unnecessary burden we have placed on students' shoulders has made it a home they would rather run away from. Students care more about having the family who supported them through all of this present for these things than they do about it taking place in the building where so much was stolen from them. The hybrid solution that you were supposed to be doing this entire time according to your own bylaws, and we're not, still excludes those who cannot wear a mask. You have never explained how a person with an exemption could attend. Exemptions are included in the executive order. It's funny how you can disregard that part of the mandates. The off-site solution is for all people and students. Have you asked the students how they feel about masks and how they're affecting them? You keep saying you're just following orders and you want what's best for the kids. Seems to me you're making things harder for the kids. Why are medical exemptions being reviewed by the district physician when they do not need to be? And how much are we paying this physician? From Lacey's The Road Forward Plan Update, January twenty twenty-two, Section I. Pursuant to EO two-five-three, individuals seeking a specific medical exemption from mask-wearing pursuant to sub-paragraphs A, B, or C above must produce written documentation from a medical professional to support the exemption. All documentation should be forwarded directly to the building principal. The written documentation may be reviewed by the district school physician. It is not required that they get approved. They just need to be from a medical professional and hand it in. This is further proof that the district is not on our side. I understand totally that you have to follow the executive orders because New Jersey legislators are idiots. But you do not need to go above and beyond to make matters worse. If a parent went out of their way to advocate for their child and get a medical exemption, who are you to decide if it's valid? Who is the district physician who has no relationship with this child to decide if it's valid? This is a decision between a doctor and a patient. And it's disgusting that this district would choose to question that, or in many cases, deny it. And it should really be a parent's decision with or without a doctor. So stop doing more than the tyrant asks. You aren't getting brownie points with him. You're, you're alienating a whole group, including those not yet brave enough to stand up. But worst of all, you're intentionally causing unnecessary harm to children. At a recent meeting, it was said, "We don't know what you guys are doing behind the scenes." Why don't we? We already know you will not do anything you deem illegal, understandably so. We already know you do more than is required of you in the executive orders, which is not okay. We already know that you wrote one pathetic letter to the governor. So why not share this enlightening information on how you are fighting for our kids behind the scenes? And when you sit up there and say, "We feel good about what we're doing, and we're following the science, and people are thanking us," you had better never leave your house without a mask on your face. If you're going to feed the propaganda to us and claim that's why you're doing everything because you believe it so strongly, make sure you're practicing it everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sokolowski, for your comments. Mr. Lidle.
Richard Bidnick, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address for the record, and begin your public comment.
Richard Bidnick, Forked River. I'm going to start off with a letter that I sent to Dr. Clark. I want everybody to understand where I stand and many parents stand on this issue. I'm writing to you today with utter disgust and outrage over your comments you made in correspondence concerning the lifting of the governor's masking mandate on the seventh of March. As an individual who has condemned the Lacey Township School Board and administration for their entire handling of the COVID response restrictions in our school, I take note of comments that you made in your letter. I quote as follows. Additionally, it is essential that we all work together to promote an environment where everyone can feel comfortable with their choice while respecting others who make a different choice. Excuse me? Really? After what you and the board have done to the public and the way you treated all of us without any respect for our choices? Are you serious? The board president went out of his way to charge four private citizens with criminal offenses for standing by their choices to their God-given right to breathe fresh air. Where was the respect from you and your cohorts then? What galls me even more is that in your written bylaws, which were approved back in twenty twenty, you had a plan in place to hold the meetings in person and virtually at the same time. However, you broke your own bylaws, then had the nerve to have your board president file criminal charges against four of us. All of this could have been avoided if you even bothered to read and follow your own bylaws. Dr. Clark, you're not only, you not only owe all of us an apology, but you should resign as superintendent. You have proved without a doubt that you're not only unfit to run this school district. Your policies have destroyed the education of our students. What you and the school board have done is nothing less than commit child abuse. And the full ramifications of your actions will not be known for years to come. You and the board claim you're just following orders from the governor. That is exactly the same approach the Nazis took during the Nuremberg Trials. The defense did not hold up. To knowingly, emotionally, and mentally hurt children and just stand by and say you're just following orders is an indefensible position. In the past, I have tried not to make my comments personal. But now this made me realize that your actions and statements are so damaging that you need to resign. We cannot move forward with the superintendent who is so oblivious to the damage you and your administration and this board have done to this school district. You need to reflect on the damage you've done and do the right thing and step down. Which then leads me to circle to this. I've been seeing all over town signs concerning the teachers working without a contract. I want to be clear, this is totally false. The teachers are working under the current contract, which stays in effect till the new contract is negotiated. It seems that the teachers' union is trying to muster up public support to get a new contract resolved. But I have to ask, where have all those teachers been when it came to supporting unmasking the children in our schools and supporting the parents? Surely, they could see firsthand the horrible effects on the children. Yet where, after all, they were, after all, the foot soldiers for enforcing the masking mandates in our schools. Without their full cooperation and support, the masking mandate could never have been achieved. Saying you were only following orders is not a defense. It seems they have bitten the hand that feeds them. Now they want the public support, and I don't think they will have any support because so much damage has been done. Therefore, I'm asking the LTEA on behalf of the taxpayers of Lacey Township to negotiate givebacks in their contract. Eighty million dollars for a failing school district is way too much. If we needed any more evidence of this, just look at the test scores which were presented at the end of last year and tonight. They were sad and pitiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bidnick. Mr. Lidle.
Regina De Senza, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address for the record, and begin your public comment.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Regina descends at Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I'd like to thank Mr. Zalinski for the random student drug testing report this evening. It's something that I was looking for, for a couple of months. It's good to know that the program appears to be working, but it's still sad that we get positive results there. Also, I'd like to congratulate the negotiations team for holding their grounds on the issue of the six-period stipend. This issue has been a source of contention for over nine years since Dr. Sandra Brower was here. It's so unfair to the elementary school teachers. And as Mrs. McAvoy said, all anyone wants is a fair contract. I did my time in negotiations, and I know what goes on. It is very difficult to get twelve people together on various dates. So now it goes to impasse, and we wait and see what happens. Last month, also, I had asked for the health benefits payment to be put on the bills and claims report. I reviewed the report this morning, this afternoon, and Benicard was three hundred and eight thousand dollars. The prescriptions, Delta Dental was forty-five thousand dollars. But again, I have no idea how much the health insurance is. Now, there was a wire transfer noted for Chase Bank. So I really don't believe it when I've been told that the report can't list electronic fund payments. They can. The Bills and Claims Report manages to list all the payments for every sports official, but not the million-dollar monthly expense for health benefits. Starting tomorrow, I will be sending in Oprah requests for the amount of the health benefits costs and the employee contribution. And tomorrow morning, I have an Oprah Request appointment for a bill review. I will be in, and I did make contact with the governor's office. I was turned down for a personal meeting. But if anybody would like to send email to the governor's office, contact Eric Martin at NJ.gov. E R I C dot M A R T I N at NJ.gov. He is the director of scheduling for Governor Murphy. So if any parents would like to contact the governor's office, please do so. The local boards cannot help you as much as you think they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. De Senza. Mr. Lidle, who do we have next?
At this time, Mr. Plino, I do not see any other hands raised. Oh, and as I say that, three more went up, Mr. Plino. So at this time, we'll recognize Jason B. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address for the record, and begin your public comment.
My name is Jason Buto, Bamber Lake. While I was at an event this weekend at the high school, uh, for the wrestling match, about ninety-five percent of the people that were in the gymnasium weren't wearing a mask. Also, in the video portion of, of this meeting tonight, I, there were some teachers that were talking in the microphone that didn't have masks on. And I've also had reports of office staff not having masks on. Now, me personally, you know, I don't like masks. I, I, I don't care if you wear one. That's your choice. We all know about the choice. But we can't have two sets of rules. And I, I, I think that Mr. Polino filing charges on people while the school is allowing unmasking is, is not so good. And I, I would advise the board and the superintendent to have a talk with Mr. Polino and try to rescind that, those charges that he put on parents. Because I have video of people not wearing masks on school grounds. And if I have to, I, I guess I can use those videos, and the people that were charged can have those videos. Um, I, I, I just, I, I don't think it was right, and I, I personally think Mr. Polino should resign, especially with with the disdain he seems to have for people that are commenting tonight. So that's all I have. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Budow. Mr. Lidle.
Jessica D., please unmute your microphone, state your name and address for the record, and begin your public comment.
Okay, Jessica De Lee, Heatherington Court. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I have a few updates and also questions, but I know I won't get them answered, but at least they will, will, or won't fall into deaf ears. Quarantine, there are many townships that have dropped their close contact quarantine. They are still, I guess, doing the contact tracing. However, they are no longer requiring quarantine. My five-year-old was in kindergarten. Her entire class was shut down. She was perfectly healthy, and she had to stay home for five days for no reason. I am asking you guys to make it official that the quarantine is dropped. This is ridiculous. Especially with now the masks being taken off. I had a conversation with Dr. Clark and Mr. Zalinski, where Mr. Zalinski mentioned that things are going to get worse as far as the contact tracing. And they may get worse as far as the contact tracing, but that does not mean that our perfectly healthy children have to quarantine. Unless they're showing signs and symptoms of, of COVID, then they should stay home. Other than that, they should be in school where they belong. Uh, the masks, I was, received a letter months ago indicating that you guys can no longer provide masks for the students. Now with seeing that we received over eight million dollars of ESSER funds, every single penny of that money should be going to our child. If you guys had to buy the entire stock in masks, you should have. You should have never, ever sent a letter stating that you can no longer provide them. You have plenty of money to do so. The ESSER Fund number three, one of the items that we've asked for over and over again, I know through Oprah requests are what was given as far as strings attached to you guys as far as what our children have to be under with regard to you receiving this money. You received eight million dollars. You guys are completely abusing our child by putting those masks on them. And I know what's going to come next is going to be all these other mandates coming down the pike. There's no reason why you guys could not have taken those masks off. You guys are scared to lose the money, and you sold our children out for it. Once the mandates are supposedly lifted on March 7th, I'm already hearing you guys are now trying to lean on somebody else to the, oh, it's our hands are tied situation. Now you're saying it's going to be the Department of Health. I've heard, I don't know if it's hearsay, but that there possibly could be that the children will have to wear masks on the bus on the way to school. That is absurd. It is just another idiotic task that is going to cause more drama in our town. So I am asking you to don't even go down that path. It makes no sense for our children that leave our house to go on a bus mass and then go into school unmasked. Lastly, segregation, not only do you guys are segregating just us now by the unmasked, not allowing us into these buildings and into these meetings. There is no reason why tonight you guys could not have just, you know, maybe put your hand out to the to the community and say, you know what, this battle has been going on long enough. We want to conduct our business. We want everybody to be a part of this. But instead, you had to pull that, I'm not doing this anymore. I'm gonna go file suits on all these people. There's a whole video of our town now on Facebook and it is pathetic. I am so ashamed to be a part of this town. I truly am. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lydell.
Allison H., please unmute your microphone. State your name and address for the record and begin your public comment.
Allison Hollister, Forked River. I have one a couple important things to say. One is with the A B block that was mentioned is just a guide for students who have not been, are not used to this. Are they going to get an explanation of how this A B block is supposed to work for them as they're right now on this, you know, four-class block? That's number one. Number two, the thing I'm concerned about, two things I'm concerned about. Virtual IEP meetings. If we can do meetings in person with masks on for parent-teacher conference, why can we not have an IEP meeting which is extremely important to those students with disabilities in person with a mask on as well? I don't see, I don't understand the reasoning behind still having virtual IEP meetings. And I will contact Dr. Bond to see what we can do about that. Because I believe that the child who should be there, a part of it as well as the parents in person to see everybody's faces at this point. Like I said, if we could do it for parent-teacher conferences, if we could go to the school for chorus concerts, if we could go to the school and wear masks, then we can go to the school and have an IEP meeting. And my third concern is as Mr. Zalinski and Mr. De George went over the assessments, I have a student who is failing. I've reached out to the teacher to get extra support. I received a letter that my child needed basic skills intervention for math. And I was fine with that. Any extra help that my child gets, I'm, any of my children get, I am always over and beyond to go above and beyond what they need help in to get them to where they need to be. However, when my child comes home upset because there's twenty-nine students in a math class and his questions to his answers are never answered, or he has to sit there for over three minutes with his hand raised in the air and never get an answer until an assistant teacher walks in the room and then leaves. So my concern is, where are these basic skills teachers that you hired? Where are they? Why is it only that they're in the rooms at certain periods of time? You have kids who are not doing good. Several students saying, the teacher's not teaching. She should be helping us. This one should be helping us. This one. No help. Why are these students failing and not receiving the help? But I'm sticking my neck out to help my kid, making sure that they get the work that they need to get done. Making them sign on to extra help on the computer. Trying to teach them the best I can and even looking into personal tutoring outside of the school district. Yes, my child has stayed after school for tutoring. But the worst problem is when I'm told he needs extra help in school with a letter and he's not receiving it, that's a problem. When I hear it's a chaotic classroom because twenty-nine students are stuffed into a room, that's unacceptable. I understand that there is an issue with teacher-student ratios. I get it. But look at the, look at the whole entire picture. You have students who are failing. Maybe there's a reason because the teacher doesn't have enough time to get to all twenty-nine of her students individually. That's a concern that needs to be locked into. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Hollister, thank you for your comments. So I would hope that your questions, if Dr. Clark can address them later, that if you can just reach out to Mr. Zalinski, Dr. Clark with those that you asked, and hopefully they could have some resolution to your situations. But thank you. Mr. Lydell, do we have anyone else?
Yes, sir. Morgan C., please unmute your microphone. State your name and address and begin your public comment. Morgan, are you there?
Hi, my name is Morgan Charterina. I live in Lacey, New Jersey. I have three children that attend the Lacey Township School System. My oldest is in high school. My middle son is at the Mill Pond School. And my youngest is at Cedar Creek Elementary. I wanted to touch base on three topics quickly this evening because, you know, it's late. Kind of half asleep. But the first topic is the masking situation. The second topic is bullying and the third topic I'll end with is the food. So for the masking, my daughter is a cheerleader for the Lacey Township High School. She is a varsity cheerleader for the competition team. And over the weekend, myself, my boyfriend, my mother, and my daughter attended my daughter's cheerleading competition at High School North with hundreds. I'm going to repeat that. My daughter's competition was held at Tom's River North High School with hundreds of other parents. When I walked in, we were never once in a high school on school premises asked to put a mask on our faces. We paid, we walked into the arena with hundreds, maybe even close to a thousand people in that same arena for hours. We all sat maskless, never once being asked to put our mask on. This is a power trip what's going on in our Lacey Township right now. I can name multiple counties and different areas where nothing like this is happening. You know, we're trying to come en masse in numbers. People are afraid that they're going to go to jail at this point because of the power trip that Lacey Township has. It is absolutely absurd. It is ridiculous. The second issue that I want to bring up is bullying. Mill Pond. Now, my child does not have an issue and I'm very thankful for that. However, a lot of my friends' parents, I'm sorry, a lot of my parents, my son's friends' parents do have major issues with the bullying issue going on at Lacey Township. Children are really not being treated very kindly in Mill Pond. And the teachers are just turning a blind eye to what is happening. Children are being not, they're being like called out, made fun of if they look different, not wanting to go to school, having a lot of anxiety issues. And that really needs to be addressed because too many parents are afraid of their children going to school. Or too many parents at Mill Pond are afraid that their kids are thinking of hurting themselves. And I'm speaking for close friends of mine right now. The other issue that I would like to discuss is still the food. My son came home a week and a half ago and told me that the milk was so expired. And when he said something to the lunch lady, she looked, or the people that help at the lunch, the woman said, we go, no, that's not expired. We go by military time. I don't need to say anymore. That speaks for itself, what I just said. The way they addressed my son when he made a comment about the milk being expired, we go by military time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. And I just want to, parents, there's, again, anybody, not just Mrs. Charterina, but who have concerns such as these should, again, follow the chain of command. Your teachers, if they don't get any response from the teachers, they're building principles and then move up from there. And certainly send emails and make sure you're getting responses from them. Mr. Lydell, do we have anybody else?
Yes, sir. Anne Lighter, please unmute your microphone and begin your public comment. Actually, Anne just put her hand down and at this point, there we go, she's back. And give me one moment. All right, Anne Lighter, you may unmute your microphone. State your name and address for the record and begin your public comment.
Oh, my God, I'm so tired. Anne Marie Lighter, the Woods of Bamber. Sorry about that. I was looking for the mute button and I lowered my hand. Regarding the food, I just want to say that I'm continuing my little research on the food issue. I'll be reaching out to, I can't even think of her name, Crystal, next week to see if I can meet with her to get her viewpoint. But I just, I don't know if parents or the board members are aware that there's an Instagram page that the children of the high school have started. Take note, it's LTHS food. LTHS underline food. And these kids are posting like, they're really creative. There's reviews of the food and I'll say that some of them are not bad, some, but a lot of them are. So about the food that the board members tasted and reported on at the last month's meeting, I'm sure it wasn't this. So board members, take a look on Instagram. If you don't have it, get your grandchildren or whatever kids you can grab. And look at it. It's really interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Larder, for that information. Mr. Lydell, do we have anything?
No hands up at this time, Mr. Plino.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to close public comment at this time. Dr. Clark, is there anything you'd like to address?
Yes, there is, Mr. Plino. Thank you. There was a parent who asked about the A B block and are students going to get an explanation? So I just want to point out that this change is not happening until September. And they absolutely are going to get an explanation on how to navigate the new schedule. Keeping in mind that, you know, some of the students had already been in an A B block pre-COVID. So obviously, this is going to be for students who have never had the A B block. But they'll have ample opportunity to get acclimated. I think that same parent discussed virtual IEP meetings. And that's something that I will absolutely reach out to Mr. Bond about as to whether, you know, as to why that's happening. And you are correct that if we're having in-person meetings for back-to-school nights and conferences and things like that, there's no reason why we can't continue that path to normalcy as well. There was a question posed early in the comments and the question was, have you asked students about wearing masks? And the fact of the matter is, is we have. So like we're doing a listening and learning tour with our parents, Mr. Zalinski and I have done a listening and learning tour with our students and we're going to continue that. We have asked them that question. Surprisingly, that wasn't one of their concerns. Cafeteria food was a concern. Scheduling was a concern, guidance was a concern. And those are all things that we took copious notes on and that we will be addressing in the coming months. A lot of parents tonight in their public comments made comments about the masks. And, you know, what does that mean on March 7th when masks become optional as per the communication that I sent out? There were questions about quarantine and contact tracing. And it is correct, we are waiting for guidance from the CDC. I have met with my colleagues in Ocean County. There are about thirty school districts in Ocean County and we're all waiting for that guidance to come out. By the way, I also think it's important to mention that Dan Regane, who is the director over at the Ocean County Health Department, weighs in on our meetings. He attends our meetings. And I specifically asked him that question about whether we are going to be able to do away with the quarantine and the contact tracing. Of course, he didn't give me a direct answer, but he alluded to that they are awaiting guidance. So hopefully that will come out in the next couple of days and I will be updating our school community as I have up until this point. Some of the other comments that were made tonight with regard to assessments for those parents who have those concerns, I implore you to reach out to myself or Mr. Zalinski or the both of us. Our phone number is very easy. It's six oh nine nine seven one two thousand. You can reach me at extension one zero zero two. You can reach Mr. Zalinski at one zero zero three. And we hope that a lot of the concerns that were raised tonight become part of the collaborative discussion that we have when we schedule our listening and learning tour on March 10th. So again, as I mentioned earlier, I am going to be sending out communication as to what that's going to look like, where it's going to be, the time it's going to be, and how parents can sign up to attend. Mr. Plino, I believe that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. At this time, we're going to go with board comments and I'm going to start with Mr. Amato.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Tonight, I'd like to congratulate all the great people of Lacey Township for their role in lifting the mask mandate on March 7th. It is because of people like you that we can begin our journey forward in March. And you, the people, should be applauded for your resolve and commitment in protecting your children and all the children of Lacey Township from the harms of wearing a mask. As we move forward, I urge you to continue to hold me and my colleagues accountable for all the things pertaining to our schools. Continue to challenge us to be better, to work harder, to be receptive of new ideas. They say it takes a village. Well, I believe in this village and I'm certain that together we can work towards developing a school district that we can all be proud of. Since I'm not part of any of the committees, I'm asking my fellow board members to appoint me liaison to the residents of Lacey. I will review and research all questions pertaining to our board via email and then forward them to the appropriate committee chairperson for further action while always keeping our board president and superintendent up to date. And finally, yes, finally, I am looking forward to conducting business and beginning our quest to make Lacey School District one of the best in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amato.
Okay, I'm going to keep this real brief. I just wanted to tell the public that the board and the administration did go tonight to school for our board meeting in person. And unfortunately, it was shut down. So that's why, obviously, we started at seven o'clock. I feel terrible for the students. I think we had nine that we were going to honor today in person. And the staff members also, for the staff members of the month. It's been pushed off and pushed off. And at this point, I don't even know what to say. I apologize. I don't even know what to say about it, but I'm very sorry that you have to go through this month after month. But next month, hopefully, the governor continues to keep his word or whatever he's doing. We can do it in person and that would just be wonderful. So again, I'm sorry to the students and the staff members of the month. It shouldn't be this way, but unfortunately, this is where we are. I wanted to thank Mr. Zalinski and Mr. De George. Um, I wanted to thank Mr. Zalinski and Mr. De George on his pres- on their presentations tonight. Um, they were very informative. Um, I would love a hard copy if I can get one of each. Um, I will watch the video again, but I'm, I'm a paper person, so um if we can make that happen, if you don't mind. Um, and I know there's teachers and staff members on tonight. Um, it's a hard time with negotiations, um but I just want you to know that we all do appreciate all of you and we recognize your hard work every day. So thank you very much for that. Um, and that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. Um, Mrs. Downing?
Hi, thank you. Um, I have a lot to say tonight, but I'm just going to skip it and possibly talk next month. But I did want to, um, I know they're not here, but I did want to congratulate our two students, uh seniors of the month, Brayden and Susanna, and also our unsung hero Nora. Um, we'll see you next month for sure. Um, and hopefully we can carry on our meetings normally. I thought we were going to do it tonight. But you know, sides couldn't get together and here we are again, virtual. Little fed up, but March is going to be a whole new world and we're going to see our students back there and we're going to celebrate their accomplishments. So um looking forward to that. In our superintendent's report also, um I want to give a shout out to the Lenoka Harbor Fire Company. Um, our students, two of them are Maya Robbins and Brody Leisure, placed first and second respectively in the Lenoka Harbor Fire Department Fire Prevention Poster Contest. I want to say thank you to the fire company for getting involved with our students on a really important issue, fire prevention. So thank you for taking the time to be part of our school community and doing a great job. Other than that, Mr. Polino, that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. Uh, Mrs. McAvoy?
Hi. Thank you for everybody staying up this late listening. Appreciate you staying with us. I agree with what everybody said. I'm very upset that we couldn't celebrate the students in person. However, the March meeting is coming up and we will have so many students and teachers to congratulate in person. And so I'm really looking forward to that. Congratulations to the staff members of the month and the students of the month. Reports that were given tonight were excellent. Thank you for enlightening all of us. Um, we appreciate everyone commenting tonight. I just have a few comments to make. The one parent who said that if we leave our house without a mask on, we better watch out. That was unacceptable. Leaving our houses is not mandated or required to wear a mask. So comments like that, even though we appreciate people speaking, comments like that have no bearing on anything. And the other comment, asking Dr. Clark to resign, how ridiculous. One person in an entire community, one person who doesn't even have any children or never had a child in our district standing up and asking her to resign and child abuse and this and that. This one person does not represent a community. Dr. Clark, please don't resign. We know you're not. We appreciate your leadership. We appreciate you guiding us. So I know you're bigger and a better person, but comments like that is just crazy. Other than that, uh Mr. Polino, Mr. Scanlon and I spoke earlier about the teacher contract. If you didn't hear the three of our comments in the agenda meeting, please go back and listen. Teachers, staff members, we appreciate you. We want to give you a fair contract. I don't know what you're hearing out there, but we are trying to give you a fair contract. We are negotiating in good faith. And you put trust in us and we do appreciate everything you do every day for our students. That's it, Mr. Polino. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. Uh, Mr. Scanlon?
Thank you. I would um just like to start out by apologizing to the students and staff members who were again denied the opportunity to receive the recognition they deserve for their accomplishments. We so look forward to meeting uh to greeting this, this month's seniors of the month. Brayden Mottershed and Susanna uh Mistah and the unsung hero Nora Valley at uh next month's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon, for your short comments. It seems like since you became vice president, you're getting shorter and shorter. I don't know what's going on with you, but maybe next month that'll change.
Well, if it's an earlier hour, I talked longer.
Get it. I get it. So um my comments, I, I need to address a few things. So first of all, uh in regards to Dr. Clark uh and that, that letter that Mr. Bidnick read, that, that he sent to her or myself and stuff like that. That email was, was disrespectful, uh rude, uh and for the most part incorrect. Mr. Bidnick and everybody else who's still on here and who goes back and listen. First of all, this Board of Education members and the administration had nothing to do with me filing charges against individuals. That was all on me. Okay, so Mr. Bidnick, you're wrong with that. I don't know how many times you have to be told that. Second thing is they're not criminal charges. They are disorderly person charges. It's not criminal. Mr. Jason Butto, if I'm saying your name correctly and I apologize if I'm wrong. I can only control what I can control. The meeting, the things that I can control are the board meetings. Whatever happens in the rest of the school is, is up to administration. So if you're walking into school and seeing people maskless, there's nothing I can do about that other than direct it to the administration. So I control what happens in the meetings. And you're asking me to step down and resign because why? I'm following the rules. So anytime somebody follows the rules, they're wrong. That's basically what you're saying. Not happening. A lot of the parents, you had some good questions and again, I ask you to follow up with your building, your teachers, students, students, teachers, your children's teachers and the building principals, administrators, um up to Dr. Clark. As far as tonight's meeting. It, we wouldn't be here until eleven o'clock if again, a handful of selfish parents or individuals didn't show up to the meeting unmasked and tried to force their way in. I apologize to Mr. Zalinski. I made a comment to him as I was walking in today. I said, you're in charge of keeping people out without mask and I was only kidding him. But he tried to reason with people out there and unfortunately um he, he was unable to reason with unreasonable people. Um, and I'm sad that my, my, our, our lawyer, Mr. Padula stepped, stepped out there to try to reason and it, and it kind of got bad. And that I had to go out there to settle things down um and try to reason. Um, it, it's just a shame that I, I wish our, our police department would have got a little bit more involved, um but that unfortunately was left to us. So with that being said, I did make a comment and I'm sure it's on there because I, the lady was holding her phone in her arm thinking that, you know, we're stupid and we don't know we're being videotaped uh or whatever it is she was doing. Uh, it's probably already on the web. I made a promise again that I will be charging those handful of individuals that I could identify tonight uh with uh complaints tomorrow. So I will be spending my Friday at municipal court. So those of you that know who I know who you are, um you will be getting complaints. And not only for tonight's meeting, but I will be going back to the January meeting that we had to adjourn because of you being unmasked. So you will be getting six more charges in the mail. So uh again, it, it's not an ego thing. Uh, we have rules and because of your disrespectful and your unreasonable behavior as adults, our children once again had to lose out. And we are here at eleven o'clock at night at a public meeting because of your selfishness. Just because you don't want to wear a mask and you throw your opinions on us, we have to listen to them. But our opinions don't matter. So we're wrong. No, we're not. So again, I'll be down to court tomorrow and look in the mail because you'll be getting charges. And, and I will see you in court. As far as dropping them, there is no way I am dropping these charges. I will deal with them in court. And as I said before, this is on my dime and my time. And nobody's pressured me to do this. I'm doing it myself. If our police department won't step in and help us, then I will do it. And I promise you that and I will. And that is my job here as president of this board is to follow the rules of regulations and everything else that we need to do. So if we're going to do that and you're asking any of these members or anybody to step down because of doing that, you're out of your head. We're not doing it. We follow the rules. And if you can't, don't come in our building. Mr. Amato, I appreciate that thought that you were saying about becoming a liaison to the public. But unfortunately, sir, our rules prohibit us as board members to have constant communication directly with the public answering emails and so forth and such. But we can't do that, although it is a good idea. We, we unfortunately cannot do that. I think at this point, I have said everything I had to say. And I am going to go on to our agenda items. So. Page one or page two correctly. New business. Number one, the minutes, present this vote, uh motion to. Minutes.
I'll second.
Mr. De George.
Mr. Armato.
Yes, sorry.
Yours. Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes. Uh, item number two, list of bills. We have a motion.
Move.
Second.
Mr. De George.
Discussion, Mr. Polino.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Discussion on the bills. I'm sorry, it's getting late. Discussion on the bills. Anybody have any questions? Okay, no discussion. Mr. De George.
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes, and I'm going to be abstaining from um the list of bills payment to Cleary Jacoby.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Uh, item number three, transfers. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Mr. De George, discussion. No discussion, Mr. De George.
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes. Items four through six financed itself. Uh, the S one seven oh one reporting for January, approval of settlement agreement. Um, and release and approval of interlocal agreement for school crossing guard. Do I have a?
Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Scanlon, any discussion?
Yes, um, Mr. George, how much are we getting charged for the crossing guards presently this year? Did they raise this money?
They raised it slightly. Uh, it's twelve thousand dollars this year.
And it's going up to twelve thousand six hundred?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, slight increase.
And are we paying for trash too?
We are not.
Pardon me?
We are not, not this year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? Mr. De George.
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes. Item seven through ten, facilities.
Move.
Move.
Mrs. Downing, second?
I, I think it was down, Mrs. Downing, Mrs. McAvoy, yes.
Oh, okay. So we got one or two there. Any discussion, questions? None? Okay, Mr. De George?
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Give me one second, please. I'm sorry, um, Mrs. Uh, do we have um something from Miss Claus to reference this?
The facilities?
We do not. It was removed.
Right. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Last minute withdrawal. Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. My, my second sheet that you printed still has it, but thank you. Sorry.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes, thank you. Items eleven through fifteen.
Move. Second.
And just so that people notice, appointment of special ed related services, educational affiliation agreement, calendar adoption and the first read of the bylaws and policies. Um, with, are we removing um O one seven one?
Yes, we are going to, uh, as agreed, uh during the first portion of the meeting, we are going to revise this motion to remove policy zero one seven one and remand that back to committee. So the, the, that particular number fourteen will be presented for voting uh with that revision.
Very good. Thank you. Everybody understand discussion or questions?
Uh, yeah. This goes up to, this goes up to item fifteen.
Yes, correct. And item fifteen is um English language learner uh three-year plan. Yes.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Any other questions? Motion? I mean, uh, Mr. George?
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes, thank you. Item sixteen and seventeen, uh, the HIBs harassment intimidation, um, the two that we have here. Motion?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. George?
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
No, you have to abstain.
Yes, sir. Mr. Polino.
Yes. Okay, resolutions. B, donations. Move that the board approved the following donations listed on the agenda. Motion?
Move.
Second.
Discussion. George?
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes, and thank you for the generous donations. Uh, C, programs in curriculum.
Move.
Student, student, teacher.
Back in.
We have a first and second discussion. Mr. George.
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
I think yes. This is where I'm looking for, yes. Okay.
Yes. Yep, you're correct. Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes, thank you. Uh, section D, professional days and workshops. Motion?
Move. Second.
Move the second, any discussion? Mr. De George.
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes. Section E, certified personnel, one through fifteen.
I will make that motion.
Excuse me?
I will make that motion.
Oh, well, thank you. We have a second. Do I have discussion? Any discussion?
Discussion on uh topic ten, uh after-school social and emotional learning program.
All right, let me get there.
I'd like to learn a little bit more about what that is. Um, I, I would like some details on what it is before I, I give an okay on something like that. I would ask that maybe we can move this to um next month or I, I, I really like to dive into this a little bit.
All right, so about, real quickly, um, is this something that could be answered quickly by Dr. Clark or?
I could, Mr. Polino, I'll go a bit to it.
Go ahead.
So, so what that is, Mr. Armato, is that we are um establishing, uh much like we did the after-school tutoring program. It's after-school uh groupings of students who would be interested in talking to our um uh social workers and our psychologists uh after school. Uh, they would get recommendations from the guidance counselors and parents directly that they would want to meet. After school, they would get recommendations from the guidance counselors and parents directly that they would want to meet. And they meet in these, we call them round tables, you can call them groups, you can call them. All sorts of different things, but they meet and they talk about maybe issues that are relevant to them. They talk about themselves. They can dive into different details of their own lives. They can be individual or they can be group sessions based on. The recommendations that come to us. It's what the parents have asked for in our surveys. They want social emotional learning help. They want classes after school. So we felt it was a good use of our S R two and S R three funds that we would establish this after school help. For our students, it would happen Monday through Thursdays, one hour a day during the weeks.
Is there a curriculum outline for this?
There's not a curriculum outline. You rely on the training of the professional health. People like the psychologists and social workers to, they do this all the time. They just do it during the day most of the time. But we don't want to take kids out of classes necessarily, just like we wouldn't take them out for tutoring. So they want to do it after school. There's no specific. Curriculum that they would follow because every student's an individual and it would be different.
Okay, in the essence of time, I'm going to vote no on ten because I don't know enough about it, but I'll vote yes on everything else.
Okay, so that's discussion. So we get to get to that, Mr. Armato.
I went ahead.
Okay, so Mr. George.
Right, and I guess Mr. Armato, it's yes, except for ten, which is a nay.
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Oh, wait, yes, and I have to abstain on. I can't see because.
E nine.
E nine, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes, thank you. Item F, non-certified personnel, one through nine.
Move.
Second.
Question. Mr. De George.
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes, thank you. Walk-ons, Mr. George, number one.
Yes, sir, we have two. The first is titled termination of staff member and reads as follows. Move that the Lacey Township Board of Education approve the termination of staff member ID number. Eight five six two two five, effective January twenty five, twenty twenty two.
Motion.
Move, second.
It was first.
Oh, I thought you were off. I'm over. I'm moving.
Okay, first and second, any discussion? Mr. De George.
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes. And walk on number two, Mr. De George.
Yes, sir, it is entitled long-term suspension of student and reads as follows. Move that the board, Lacey Township Board of Education, approve the long-term suspension of student ID number nine zero three. Eight eight four, effective January twenty 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 two and concluding. Pending the student's compliance with the agreed upon conditions, April twenty five, twenty twenty two.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Mr. George.
Mr. Armato.
Yes.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
That is all I have.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that tonight.
Good night.
I'll second.
All in favor? Good night.
Yes, definitely.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night. Good night.